No, it really was.
Good evening. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded way back by wrps at youtube.com/wrpsrockland. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. Please then join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that our Veterans Affairs agent read us the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the Town of Rockland's Blackboard Meeting for Tuesday, October 7, 2025. First on the agenda, community announcements. Doug?
Thanks, Mike. I have two announcements tonight. One is, as a reminder to the community, we'll be doing the dedication to the William N. Mullin Memorial Park on Saturday, October 18th, at 3 o'clock on the corner of Water and Union Streets, and everyone from the public is encouraged to attend. There'll be a handful of speakers and a lot of guests, so we are looking forward to that ceremony. And then, secondly, we have our Fire Department Annual Appreciation Day. It'll be Saturday, October 25th. We're going to do it a little earlier in the morning this time at 8:00 a.m. at the fire station. That should be a good time because there'll be the shift change. We'll be able to recognize even more firefighters than normal. And I just want to highlight that at the end of the meeting, under my administrative report, I'm going to talk a little bit about several firefighters that are going to be recognized for some acts of heroism recently. So I'll talk about that at my report at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Next on the agenda, minutes, 9:16, 2025. Do I have motion?
Motion.
I have a correction to the minutes.
Okay.
Top of page two, like to have effortlessly changed to tirelessly. Figure that may have been misheard. Speaking on cheap Duffy, tirelessly, work tirelessly through that endeavor, not effortlessly. I believe that's what I said.
Okay.
So motion to approve with that correction.
Second.
No discussion on it. I have a motion. I have a second. All who are in favor, that's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, under new business, Union Point update. This is John Tuig, New York Development, Brooklyn Parks. John, welcome back. Paul, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, John Tuig and Paul Sincauda, I've been here before. Thank you for having us back. When we were talking to Doug and thinking about what we would do, thought we'd give you just a brief overview. We have, you know, it's been a while since we've been here. Talk a little bit about what we've been doing and moving it forward. You know who we are, so we're going to skip that. But a little bit, just to remind people, especially people who may be at home, a little bit about where we've been. 2020 was, believe it or not, in the middle of COVID. We were appointed. '21 and '22 was really focused on land control and eminent domain. If you remember, putting the base back together because L-Star still owned about 800 acres of the base and unfortunately still owned all the roadways and all the water and sewer infrastructure, so we worked on that. Restructuring the Navy Agreement and then start to talk to the state about MWRA and subsidies and infrastructure. And 2023, the rezoning in all three communities, which we spent a lot of time, a lot of time with you folks too, about moving that forward and also had to get the rezoning from the SRA. There were 38 different zones that were in the old base. There are now one zone, commercial residential zone, so rezoning that. And then in '24, going through the state approval process, we spent 369 days on the state approval process, take the project through MEPA. So we could, you know, have the approvals, which had not been done in over a decade on this base. All the approvals they had had expired or had been defaulted on, so that all had to be done. So where did we go with that? What the approval was, was a total of 13 million square feet. The zoning, about 2 million square feet of commercial, about 6,000 new homes, which the homes, I said that of all types, townhomes, apartments, single family. About 600 new affordable units. There's a state legislation that requires 10% affordability. The whole base is MBTA Communities Act compliant. We did end up, and if you look at this plan, agreeing with the state to do about 885 acres of open space. It's everything that you see there in green, pretty much rings the entire base. We did, and is labeled there as open space. A lot of that area is turtle habitat. We have a huge turtle habitat area that is primarily, actually primarily in Rockland, but also bird habitat. We have three different species of birds, but that was really the approval. We show a core development area. It's a little bit out of date about where we would start. It's sort of, today it bleeds a little bit more over to what we call, labeled up there as commercial, which is what we call the East Mat area and also over into Rockland. Right, it, that yellow sort of reaches a little bit over more into Rockland and a little bit higher than that because we have got a lot of interest in commercial space. No great surprise. They want to come in off of 228 and Route 3, and which makes a lot of sense because it helps us segregate where the existing residential is and where a lot of the proposed residential would be. So that's really the approval. Conceptual master plan, I don't think you've seen this before, but I think it would be helpful just to spend one minute. Starting the left, existing residential, the sort of white grayed out area, that's the 1,274 homes that exist there today, obviously the rail station. The housing, no great surprise, more dense housing that would go along the parkway. As you get away from the parkway, less dense housing. As you look up to the top right, you'll see that that's the piece that we helped the SRA require. That was the Coast Guard housing piece that was going, trying to go for a 40B development. We end up acquiring that. That's about 50 acres that's along the edge of the base. And that sort of little cul-de-sac you see in the buildings that are there, that's really the area where the SRA housing, the SRA building is. Then right below that is where the sports complex is located. I think everybody from a 200-mile radius knows where the sports complex is. If you get kids to go out there for lacrosse and soccer. Then you come down on the base and sort of the purple area, which we affectionately call as the East Mat of the big turnaround, which is in Waymouth and then in Rockland, labeled more for commercial. And then the Della Hunt Parkway or the Patriot Parkway, depending on where you are, which cuts through the middle of the site that is there. You'll also see we've labeled the site as town center right off the parkway. That's the area where, you know, a lot of things in the community that people wanted to see, this is an early action item for us, we're going to build a small town center. You know, I mean, as people have said, there's no coffee shop, there's no, you know, those kinds of things, you know, dry cleaner drop-off. And that'll be the town center right on the, right on the parkway. So that's where the phasing plan and the conceptual master plan came from. Water and sewer, I think everybody knows the entire base would be served by Waymouth. Now, there's an agreement with Waymouth for 450,000 gallons of water. Eventually, they're, we're working with the MWRA connection, which would bring the MWRA pipe from the Blue Hills down into Waymouth, which would create capacity. Once that comes down, the SRA is a registered water company. Once the base is served by the MWRA long-term, eventually Abington and Rockland could be served on the base by MWRA Water. That is, we have a meeting actually with MWRA tomorrow. They're working on the funding and the approvals Waymouth has filed to become an MWRA community. That's going through MEPA now. They're getting ready their second filing on that. So initial water comes from Waymouth while the MWRA connection is being constructed. There are interim water opportunities for Abington and Rockland that we have been exploring with Abington, Rockland Joint Water Works. Really, it's an idea of how to create water for the towns of Rockland and Abington, so you don't have to wait until the MWRA comes along because best-case scenario, it's six to seven years away. And as you, as I mentioned, we've got a lot of commercial interest, especially in the area we showed you there in the purple. Would really like to see that opportunity, but it's really twofold. How do you create water for what the communities need today? And then, long-term, what the base would need. And what we have talked about and we made in our presentations and in our filings is that if we're able to create that opportunity, either through Abington or Rockland system or otherwise providing some additional supply, we would then, when the MWRA comes in, turn that water, if Abington and Rockland wanted, back to Abington and Rockland. But one, create capacity that just have Abington and Rockland for itself, and then future capacity that it could take back. Sewer is town by town. Waymouth is an MWRA sewer community. Abington has plenty of sewer. They've already allocated 150,000 gallons to the base. Rockland is sewer-challenged, put that that way, although Abington has considered and their commission did vote to provide up to 40,000 gallons of sewer to Rockland. Now, that is subject to doing certain agreements. But also, Rockland, especially if it's mostly commercial development, could do septic. It's the one area on the base that can do septic because we don't have some of the other issues. It is a ridge line that would allow us to do that, again, on a smaller scale, mostly commercial. So that's water and sewer. Kind of brings us through where we went '24, getting, 2024, getting the approvals. 2025, this year, we had to get a Section 61 approved. What a section, we studied, as you may recall. About 75 different intersections in half a dozen communities. We have to do work in about 53 of them, including a work here in Rockland. We did get, you need to get a Section 61 finding, which is the state saying, yes, the planned work is okay. We did get that. We've been working with the state on getting an amended natural heritage permit or a conservation management permit that's sort of for the turtles and for the birds. We expect that will be issued late, probably end of this month, beginning of November. Again, we're giving more land, actually, over for development. No great surprise, L-Star had defaulted on its escrow payments on a lot of the money for off-site. So part of the arrangement is we will be refunding the escrow accounts, both for maintenance and for long-term habitat. We did go through with the SRA to amend all the regulations, subdivision conservation, that's done. We have an amended piece of state legislation in with Speaker Mariano that is under review. There is a piece of enabling legislation today. We would be amending it because unfortunately, it referred very specifically to L-Star, to L-Star's plans, to L-Star's development, to L-Star's 37 to 38 different zoning sections. So it doesn't do anything but sort of delete all that stuff. The SRA continues as it is, but that's in there. We're also working with the SRA, which is currently in negotiation, we think is coming to the end of negotiations, with the DDA, the disposition agreements, what we signed at closing, which sets sort of the rules of the road going forward between the SRA as the redevelopment authority and us as the master developer. So that's, we've been through three or four negotiating rounds with that. We're pretty much hopefully again finishing. We'll also be submitting to the SRA our first set of subdivision plans. There are over 800 lots on this site. Not to blame them, but I will. L-Star, when they used to sell a parcel, if they wanted to create a 200 by 200-foot parcel, they'd just cut it out as something else. And if they left a bunch of pieces left over, they didn't do anything about it. So we had to go back, re-survey the entire site. We're going to create it into 16 master lots, and then we'll, approval not required off of those 16 lots. So that'll be filed. That's been reviewed by staff. That'll be filed actually this month. So we'll do that. What do we see in 2026? Our hope is to begin the onsite roadway and utility infrastructure. We've been working on CD plans for that. Believe it or not, the parkway doesn't have water and sewer in it. Now, why do you build a almost $40 million parkway and not think that someone would actually maybe want to put water or sewer in it? So we have to run 4,500 feet of water and sewer line. And then, you know, our goal would be to start probably towards the end of 2026 for parcel construction. Start completion in '27, actually see some initial occupancies in end of '27. So that's sort of our plan. It all assumes that legislation gets passed and we finish everything, but. Little bit of update on funding. This is all, this is all new since last we were here. We did get from the state a $35 million grant, which was given to the town of Waymouth for the base. Some of that is some water improvements, some sewer improvements, and some are transportation improvements. And we've been working with Doug and Courtney and Allison on the Hingham Street corridor. We believe if we're able to get the design in a certain condition, that we will be able to build out the Hingham Street corridor intersection, which is a long time coming. We did get approval from the state to use the money, although the grant technically would be administered through Waymouth. We can use it in Rockland and Abington. The biggest piece of work, there'll be multiple intersections in Rockland, but the biggest piece will be, really be, if you think of where the motel is, taking that front. So the movement will no longer be straight through into the residential areas of Rockland. It will actually be straight through the industrial area and into the base. And so that will be the movement, also expanding the lanes, creating four lanes there, new lights that will all be rebuilt. So that's, and you have had a grant for that for a substantial period of time, which very early on, we worked with your staff on. But now, it's really, we have agreed at this stage, if we can get the funding, if we can get the plans into a certain level, that we will provide the funding from a $35 million grant to actually build it, which it's a very significant, probably will be built in long-term in some phases, but all the major vehicular improvements would all be done in the first phase. And that's about a eight, eight and a half million dollar plus project that we'll fund from the grant. So part of that is the coordination cooperation, which is really Waymouth, Rockland, Abington. We would, there'll be a suggestion of an intermunicipal agreement between all the communities because we'll be, Waymouth will be administering and technically procuring work in other communities. But the way the state looked at it, the way we've looked at it, with the state approval process, the base is a place. You know, people are not going to get to the Rockland line and say, oh, I'm at the Rockland now, why do I got to do something different? No, it should all look as unified place, which also means the improvements have to be looked at on a unified basis. Because when your major entrance off of Route 3 comes through Rockland, you want that to be as nice as what the entrance would be off of Waymouth and built out and new lights and new geometry and all that. Waymouth, we did enter into a Waymouth water and sewer agreement for 450,000 gallons. I did have a district approved in Waymouth, which allows for public roadways and other public infrastructure to be constructed in Waymouth and bonded where a percentage of the new tax revenues, in this case 30%, could go to paying those bonds. These, we have to build, if you, if you think about the base, if you know it at all, as you come off of Shea, you're going to want to come down to the rotary as opposed to what you have to do now. Let's cut over to the hangar and cut through the, drive over the bushes and go that way. We'll actually create new spine roads that will connect it all, so it'll all function as one place. And then also, we are, it had been approached to consider iCubed funding for specific projects. iCubed is infrastructure funding, where we actually pay to have the improvements built. But then the state has decided, and we've used this three times in different projects. We used it in Chesapeake Hill. We used it in Westwood, where the state recognizes if you build a new project, it's going to create sales tax revenues, it's going to create new jobs, it's going to create new income for the state, and they use that to offset the cost of the bonds by creating new development. So that's been offered to us as an opportunity. We don't have it at a particular project under that at this, at this stage. Redevelopment interest, which again is new. In our first phase, we expect the residential interest to be north of 2,000 units, with commercial interest to be about 600,000 square feet. That's what we've got for interest. Of all type of different housing, the townhomes, single-family homes, multifamily homes, been a very, very strong interest. Brookfield and NED will build probably the bulk of the townhomes. But we've got a really group of Class A partners to build out some of the others. And, you know, we're very excited about those opportunities. And, you know, when we announce the names, everybody will know them and know that they all do very, very nice work. And they're the national development teams who are very excited about doing this. And commercial is, our interests have been from retail, fitness, and grocery. So those are the three pieces. We're very anxious to try to get this moving as soon as we can because the only bugaboo on the commercial is they have an open to buy. For to open a store in '27, you miss that date, they go somewhere else. It's just sort of the nature of what it is. So we've been struggling to, and pushing very hard to get the last set of approvals that we need so we don't lose some of these opportunities that we've been fortunate enough, fortunate enough to, to get. So, Paul, if there's anything else that we have, I guess, yeah, we really kind of talked about that piece. And about moving forward, maybe go to the conceptual plan, Paul, in case there are any questions about that. But this kind of gives you a sense of sort of what we're thinking. You know, when we talk about 228 and Rockland and what's in purple, that's really where we've got the bulk of our commercial interest. We've got a lot of interest in the dark sort of bluish color as it shows up there right off the parkway to do more multifamily. No great surprise, it's immediately adjacent to the existing multifamily. Whereas in the top northern region, we've got far more interest to do communities that would be focused on single-family townhome and actually over 55 restricted housing. It's probably the biggest interest. One thing we haven't done a great job in Massachusetts about, other states have. You know, people have three-floor bedroom house, their kids are grown, they love the community, they want to stay in Rockland, but there isn't a place really for them to go. So they either make a choice, you know, maybe they don't want to go to Florida. They, you know, they like their doctors, they like their, you know, the kids are around. So one of the most well-known and best, we think, senior housing developers wants to do a large project up on the Coast Guard side because they think it's a beautiful site, and it is. It's probably one of the nicer sites that we have up there that happens to be up in Waymouth. And as I said earlier, in the lighter sort of bluish gray, again, a lower density. All sort of tying into, I mean, we're not that smart. We just sort of take where the existing residential is, where existing infrastructure is, and start to take that down the parkway. That's one of the reasons the town center is where it is. But again, unusually, what we've got is interest, obviously, people, residences near the T, but commercial and other developers near the 228 Route 3 entrance. And we're going to be able to cut several minutes off the trip off of Route 3 by rebuilding that intersection and rebuilding that roadway and changing that all and making it a directed path. So you'll get off of Route 3 and realize the straight movement actually will be towards the base as opposed to bringing the straight movement straight into the residential, you know, the street for Rockland further down Hingham Street. So that's where we're at. Can I answer any questions or?
Any questions from members of the board?
I got some. I have to say, I'm very excited about the redevelopment of the intersection there. I spent 20 minutes just today on Commercial Street, so. Couple of questions for you. So of the Phase 1 numbers that you put up there, you know, ballpark numbers, how many residential units we look at after Phase 1 within the Rockland town limits?
Absolutely none.
Okay.
There's no development planned in Rockland because of the inability to have water.
Right, okay. So that, all that Phase 1, we're looking in really the Waymouth area. Great. Long-term vision, you know, you can tell me you're not ready to speculate, but you know, a lot of questions people are asking, you know, Uh, long-term vision, um, you know, you can tell me you're not ready to speculate, but, um, you know, a lot of questions people are asking, you know, wh- what are we looking at for residential units uh in commercial square footage um within Rockland?
You know, we, and you, as you look at that plan, you can see there is a, 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 a density, sort of medium-density piece that is in Rockland. Uh, most of it is purple, most of it is um, uh, is commercial space. Uh, I think in our fiscal study, we probably predicted a mix of commercial and residential, probably something like eight hundred units and in, in Rockland at the time, that was what we filed. Um, uh, but again, the advantage of the zoning here is it can be residential or it can be commercial. Um, our biggest concern at the moment i- is it just applies to Rockland is um, we don't, and we think that the people who voted and supported this want to see development in Rockland before eight, seven or eight years from now. And so when we start to plan out the commercial space, um, we're, you know, desperately trying to see how utilities can come. The M W R A will come and will get connected, and then will be water and sewer. But how do we get it connected today so that that commercial space does not have to be all in Waymouth, for example?
Right. Um, and then another question I get a lot from constituents is um active-use open space. And we talk a lot about conservation, which is excellent. Um, but what are we looking at long-term for uh active-use open space, publicly available active-use open space?
There's a whole series of trails, public parks.
Yeah, there's a pass. I'm thinking like baseball fields, soccer fiel, fields that the residents of this area can freely use.
Is it amenities plan?
Uh, maybe amenities plan, but I'm really just talking conceptually, right?
Yeah, I mean, we've been approached by lots of folks who would like to do, um, people would like to do another sports complex here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and see if, and people wanna do soccer fields here and um baseball and in other areas. And we've created fields within, um, you know, within our development. If you, it's tough to tell, understand this is a fourteen-hundred acre development. You don't really see it on here, but there is an amenities plan of public open spaces where, um, you know, you can play ball and have a soccer game on it. You can also have it that is more passive. There are playgrounds, there are dog parks. Um, that's all on the amenities plan here. We didn't particularly bring uh that plan, but all of that will be part of the growth, because you can't ask people to live here at this scale and not have all those amenities. I mean, so that, that's sort of a, uh, given a lot of it is passive green space, because you're not building in a lot of this open space. We have the second-largest um density of eastern bucksturels in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You can't build ball fields and things in that, and that's the reality of what it is. Um, so um, uh, there'll be a lot of it that will be passive. It will also be in the core, in the center core, and the former runways will be converted to more active open spaces.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yep. Pull up my novel here. Um, so there, there are naysayers in Rockland who just have been so disappointed in the history of the development of the base, and they still think that there's no way this is gonna happen. So your presentation tonight was very encouraging, and I'm, I'm wicked excited about it. Um, I wanna talk a little bit about the benefits to Rockland. Um, so say you get a water source to happen, and we put shovels in the ground in Rockland, say in twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-six, something like that, does it seem reasonable? Um, when would tax revenue begin to flow into town?
Well, as you might imagine, totally uh dependent upon whether it's residential or commercial.
Mm-hmm.
Um, first phase of multifamily, for example, if you're, I'm not saying we're doing a mult, but if you're gonna do a multifamily development, first phase delivers in about fourteen months, start to finish, from the time you, you put the first phase, full build-out will be twenty uh months, if you're gonna do that. Um, commercial, um, some of the larger-scale format users, um, you know, eight to nine months, start to finish.
Mm-hmm.
So if you can start in first quarter of twenty-seven, you'll be opening and seeing, um, uh, you know, they'll, they'll wanna open, you know, mo, as in most commercial retail users, they're all gonna wanna open October, November. So they're gonna wanna get going, so they can have, you know, be open for the holidays in twenty-seven.
Sure.
Give you a sense.
So the tax revenue, once they.
Well, you have construct, you'll have construction, you know, modify, you know, construction tax revenue will be there. Then you go to stabilization and, you know, you'd start to see, you'll, you'll be assessed as of the January. Oftentimes, you'd be, um, your January twenty-eight, for example, would be mostly construction value. Then your twenty-nine tax uh would be probably stabilization, fully open, yeah.
Well, that's, that's.
So you start seeing taxes in first year, but they're really based on the amount of site work that was done, the amount of building work that was done, and the values for construction.
Okay, and so, um, so you said, and I remember you saying at town meeting, that it's possibly like four to six million annually in tax revenue?
Yeah.
Um, and is that, that's conservative?
Well, that's a, on a net, we were four, I think four point eight in Rockland. That was assuming building, combination of residential and commercial, and see where the split would go. Uh, but I think, uh, you know, unusually you have here at the base, you know, twelve-hundred-and-seventy-four residences that exist.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when you look at the tax base for that, um, and you look at all the costs associated with it, police, fire, school, everything else.
Yep.
Waymouth today, with twelve-hundred-and-seventy-four residences, very little commercial space, actually occupied commercial space, probably about twenty thousand square feet, so very small. Um, they generate um, uh, net to Waymouth, about three-point-two million dollars after paying thirty percent of it towards a bond, to give you a sense.
Yep.
And that's real numbers, all verified by the treasurer. So, you know, when you, when you think about if, you know, a large-scale retail user, depending on who that user is, um, that might be located in, in Rockland or Waymouth, you know, seven-hundred-and-fifty, eight-hundred-thousand dollars a year in taxes, just by that one user, when you're talking about larger format retailers.
Yep, but, I mean, are you talking like Costco, that type of?
I would never use their name, but.
No, okay, all right.
But people who are, um, you know, we, we have brought some of the more interesting retailers and fitness folks to the Commonwealth and done a lot of their stores. Um, they like a lot the idea of building a community here and be, and having access eighteen and off of Route three.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's why I think we've had the level of interest that we've had. Um, I think our biggest, biggest challenge is to be sure we can find utilities for Rockland to happen.
Okay, so, so in discussion with Abington, Rockland Joint Water Works, um, I know that I, you know, in, in my conversations with them, they have been concerned about having enough capacity for possible A D U projects that might come to Rockland or other things besides the base. So would you be willing to work with them to mitigate that, as well as having enough water for? I, I mean, I, I know you guys have generously offered to pay for a study to see if.
Well, I mean, even more than a study, I mean, they, they did express uh and gave us some costs and some proposals for about three-hundred-thousand dollars for studies to be able to identify, for example, is there work that could be done on the Myers-Ab wells, three or four of which are offline?
Yeah.
Uh, there are permitting opportunities, uh, now that some of the sewer work has been done in Rockland, that uh they could increase the capacity when working with D E P. And we've offered to um pay for that and have that, have that work done. And then if we can identify a program that would actually create, um, you know, whether it be fixing the screening or doing what it would be on a particular well, that we would actually pay for those improvements to create additional capacity in the system. Because right now, there isn't, I mean, it's about fifty thousand gallons on the water bank, um, you know, which is something, but it's not, you know, and people wanna reserve it rightfully for things that may happen on, you know, but not on the base. Uh, we've, we've made a proposal that we might, uh, want a piece of that fifty thousand gallons, because it would allow us to actively market Rockland as an opportunity that could happen earlier rather than later. We'll also talk to them about identifying other sources that might be able to be available on those. Um, and that's, you know, gonna be the subject of continuing discussion.
Okay. Terrific. So, um, and my last question is, um, you know, I know, I know I've talked to you many times about this, but is it highly likely that Rockland will finally have a grocery store?
All I can say is.
Nothing like putting you in a corner, huh?
No, I appreciate it, it's all right. No, uh, this is not the first time Laurie's done.
I know.
I know.
I know.
I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here waiting to, to jump in at some point to rescue if I.
Appreciate it, thank you. No, you don't have to rescue me, it's all right.
I ask the tough questions.
Well, no, we've had grocer interest in this site. And you know, we have brought one particular grocer chain to the east, we brought to Massachusetts. We've had interest in that.
Mm-hmm.
Part of it is, um, uh, credibility on the base, I have to tell you. It's, it's really, we've talked a little bit about this at times, um, and you said it. A lot of people don't believe this base is ever gonna happen.
Right.
And, um, so some of the commercial folks are, yeah, it all looks good. You folks seem to, you know, know what you're doing, get it, but would like it to happen. Um, and you say that, you know, there's gonna be a fair number of new residences here, would sort of like that to happen. You say there's gonna be a lot of roadway improvements, would like to see that happen too. So there's a little bit of a chicken and an egg.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but uh, we absolutely have uh high-end fitness, grocery and high-end retail interest here.
In Rockland?
Well, yes, and I'll say it, no one's gonna like what I'm about to say, but I'll say it anyways.
Okay.
I hate to force it all into Waymouth.
Yeah.
Now, our Waymouth friends would say, force it all into Waymouth, it's perfectly fine.
Yeah.
Because these are pretty sophisticated folks, and they know that Rockland really doesn't have water and sewer.
Mm-hmm.
And so it is a shame that we can't find a way to be able to market parts of Rockland. Because if you look at that, and if you were someone who's maybe spent, as Paul and I have, our careers doing retail layouts.
Sure.
Off the parkway, you have an, and you can see where there's an interior road, and that ought to be designed as a center that would have so large format and small format retail. That's, that's what that whole area should be.
Yeah.
But it should be both in Rockland and Waymouth. That's how the layout should be.
Mm-hmm.
And if we can't address the, the utility problem, it'll all get pushed into Waymouth. That's just, yeah.
That's how it is.
That's how it is, because, yeah, you, and that, that's what I meant by, all of these retail, commercial people, they have opened to buy for a period of time. And, you know, if you can't deliver, that's fine, they're just gonna go somewhere else.
Yeah.
Uh, because they have determined that this market is suitable to build another store. Okay? Where's, where can it be? Have to be able to give them water and sewer.
Yeah, and, I mean, not only is the tax revenue a positive, but it's, it opens the gates for, for, opens the gates, I didn't mean to say that, but for, um, for job possibilities.
Oh, yeah, I mean, these are, um, you know, uh, the kind of grocer that we're talking to hires sixty, eight hundred people.
Yeah.
I mean, disowned. And, and, you know, people say, oh, the grocery store jobs ain't worth anything. Well, you know, but there's also produce managers and, you know, deli managers who make six-figure incomes, and it's all perfectly fine. And, um, you know, there are real opportunities for people, um, for job opportunities to be at the base, when you're talking about this kind of square foot.
Right. And, and Doug, would you agree that the tax revenue coming in earlier than later would certainly help us out with budgeting?
I would.
Okay. All right, just, and I, that's it, that's all I got.
Thank you, or anybody else? So gentlemen, I just, I, I wanna thank you. Uh, I am, I am kind of, I guess, uh, in the same place that some of these other companies that you guys are working with are in, where I'm kind of in that, that show-me phase, right, where I believe everything you guys are telling me, and I believe best intentions, and I believe you guys are working extremely hard at it, whatever we can do as a board. I would've gotten into the water a little bit more, but there's nobody here from water to, to represent any conversations that they've had. And I don't think that that's necessarily appropriate. So, uh, I appreciate the work you guys are doing. I definitely have you guys back in again, and, you know, let's, let's not wait on this. Whatever you need from us in order to, to move this infrastructure along, you know, we're here, I think, you know, I can speak freely that we're all in support of this project. Some of us have been in the town, uh, when the Navy owned it, and have been told all these different things that we're gonna be there. You know, the Patriot should be playing there right now is, is, is one of the things.
Red Sox should be there too.
Red Sox are supposed to be there, you know, Mall of America, thank God that didn't happen. We almost had a casino, you know, we, we've had so many different, you know, Amazon, we pitched Amazon. So, I mean, there's been so many different things over the years. I, I'd just love to see at some point shovel and ground in Rockland.
Yeah.
You know, and I know you guys are doing your due diligence.
Absolutely true, and I think this base today is closer to becoming a reality than it has in a long, long time.
You know, I, I saw, at one point I looked, I said, two thousand twenty-seven, wow, I'm like, oh, wait a minute, two thousand twenty-seven is a year and a half away, you know, so.
I mean, it really, we really do wanna start next year, I mean, in, in earnest, but something's gotta fall into place to be able to do that. Um, and we don't wanna have Abington and Rockland have to wait for six or seven years. We really don't, right, because we've been surprised by the level of interest and, you know, you don't have to be, just look at the plan, you can see why Rockland and Abington should both be developed because of where they are, especially Rockland on the entrance to Route three. I mean, it makes perfect sense. But we really don't wanna wait six, seven years for that. And the other problem with it is, if you do wait six or seven years, what was gonna be there will be built by then.
Okay.
And, you know, that's.
Well, I had, I had another point to add, that, you know, you, you said that you would cover, um, improving the Myers Avenue plant, say, if, if that, and that'll have more capacity, right, once that happens and, or better, it'll function a lot better. And we get to keep that after M W R A comes into the base, and you no longer need that water source.
Yeah, what we have suggested is, at, um, certainly talking to the staff, is if we're able to help create additional water capacity.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we wanna reserve some of it, not all of it, um, for the base. When the M W R A water comes in, we would turn that water back. Um, uh, you know, we don't wanna be charged another fee for that opportunity, by the way, but, um, you know, that, that, that really create, because, I mean, forgetting about the base, Rockland and Abington have got to create additional utility supplies, otherwise the community's not gonna be able to continue to grow and, and prosper. I mean, this is life.
Yeah.
And, um, they don't have the water and the sewer right now to do that. Abington does have sewer. That's gonna happen, one way to get us solve that, that piece of it. And that is either fixing up what you have or creating a new source. There's only, only two ways to go here. And that's what we're hopeful could happen. Um, otherwise, I mean, we can wait till the M W R A comes along and, but rather not.
I'd prefer not, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think you want us to, and I don't think the people who voted for this.
I don't think so either, I think they were very supportive, and I think we, we, it's in our best interest to, to push the project along while they're still supportive.
Yeah, absolutely right.
And I, I think that, I think this support will continue, but, like I said, it's, it's the show-me phase, right? They wanna see some results, they wanna see something happen, and, yeah, I know you guys are doing everything you can, and like I said, we're here to help, whatever we can do.
Appreciate it.
John, Paul, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Kelly, thanks for coming on.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, next on the agenda, department head updates, town treasurer, Allison.
Thanks, Mike. And while Allison's coming up, I'll just very briefly tee up that, uh, the main order of business is having you authorize a, a million and a half uh in sewer borrowing. This is a million and a half that was already issued as a temporary bond anticipation note, and Allison did the work to roll it over and essentially renew that. Um, but I'll turn it over to her for that, and she may have another update about the department as well.
Sure. Hi, everyone.
Allison, welcome.
Really quickly, um, we had, um, I think we provided you the results of the sale that happened on nine-thirty, so we're just here looking for approval of the sale, um, for this. And like Doug said, this is the one-point-five ban, um, bond anticipation notes that we're rolling over again for sewer improvements. Um, and then as far as department update, we did hire an assistant treasurer, she started yesterday. Um, so, um, looking forward to having an, a fully-staffed office. Um, other than that, you know, the day-to-day in the treasurer's office.
Any questions?
John, you good?
Yeah, I'm good. I mean, the ban is pretty straightforward, and I'm, I'm glad that finally, hopefully, you'll, you'll keep it and finally have a, a good assistant.
Thank you.
We've talked about having, the need to have a good assistant, so hopefully you have one.
Hopefully.
Okay, so, uh, Doug, should I be reading this?
I think so, Allison, write that, that one and a half-page document, vote of the slug board.
I don't think we have to, I think we have in the past, just to be safe. Um, but, um, I don't have it in front of me, I don't know that you have to.
I, I'd recommend you read it, just, that's a safe and sorry.
Yeah, you would.
Okay.
You could delegate it to someone else's.
Well, see, if, 'cause I, I said out back that I'm the clerk of the slug board, so now it's not that I, the clerk of the slug board, so, so that's on me, I think.
There you go.
I think you guys knew what I was doing, or what was happening there. You guys never agreed with me so fast in your lives, so. All right, so vote of the slug board. I, the clerk of the slug board of the town of Rockland, Massachusetts, certify that a meeting of the board held October seventh, two thousand twenty-five, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified, at which a quorum was present. The following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted to approve the sale of one-point-five million, four percent general obligation bond anticipation notes uh of the town dated October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, and payable October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-six, to Fidelity Capital Market. To Fidelity Capital Markets, a division of National Financial Services LLC, at par and approved interest, if any, plus a premium of eighteen thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of the notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. And a final official statement dated September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer. Be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver significant events. Uh, disclosure undertaken in compliance with SEC Rule fifteen C two dash twelve, in such form may be approved by bond council to the town. Which undertaken shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures. And continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deem sufficient. Or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status for the, of the notes and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents relating to the notes, uh, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original. And all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission. Shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters throughout relating hereto, uh, or thereto. Having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the select board, the town clerk and the town treasurer, be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions. And execute and deliver such certificates, recipients or receipts or other documents as may be determined by them. For any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot. That a notice stating the place, date, time and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes. Was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours or in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located. Or if applicable, in accordance with the alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by attorney general is set forth in ninety, nine hundred forty CMR twenty-nine point three, uh, two B. At least forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remained so posted at the time of the meeting. That no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sale of the notes were taken in executive session, all in accordance with General Law Chapter thirty A, Section eighteen dash twenty-five, as amended. Date October seventh, two thousand twenty-five, uh, entertain motions to approve everything I just read.
So moved.
Motion and second?
Second.
A second, all of those in favor? If that's unanimous, thank you. Okay, anybody have, any other questions for Allison, or we have her? Alright, thank you, Allison.
Oh, thank you.
Alright, I'm done for the night. Uh, next on the agenda, uh, interim sewer superintendent, Dave Taylor.
Did you wanna do the authorization first?
Yeah, yeah, it's part of it.
Do you want me to do the intro on that, Dave, or did you wanna do it?
No, you could.
So there's, there's, if you, uh, continue into that same tab, um, at the end of the one and a half million dollar borrowing. You'll see that there's a, two single-page documents, one says authority to file, and the second one says certifying statement for the authority to file. So, these are two documents required by the State Revolving Fund, also known as the Clean Water Trust. Um, which is going to authorize the sewer superintendent by position, not any individual by name, but the position. Um, to be able to file with the Mass Clean Water Trust. And I strongly urge you to do this, because as we've done with the Water Department, with some of their borrowing. We get much lower interest rates and possibly even some principal loan forgiveness as a result. Um, so what these two documents do is authorize the sewer superintendent, which in this case, uh, Dave Taylor is the interim superintendent. Um, to be able to execute documents and for those applications.
Alright, I'll, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to authorize the sewer superintendent, uh, the authority to file.
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all of those in favor? If that's unanimous, thank you, thank you. Okay, uh, sewer update, Dave, welcome.
Uh, alright, I'm not gonna be as short as Allison, but, um, so, you guys have the handout in front of you?
We do.
Okay, so I seg- segregated all the areas that I thought we should touch, uh, on bullet points. So the first, uh, part of the sewer update would be submittals, reporting, financials, and I did it in chronological order. I got there, uh, geez, almost a year ago now, another week, it would be a year ago. So I did these in chronological order, so the, the first, uh, part was the semi-annual compliance report, so that was due probably a week after I got there. So we were working off a document that was previously done. Uh, we did do the submittal to that, uh, the submittal was a little redundant, it wasn't really quite up to par. So we knew we were gonna essentially have to have a setup meeting with the EPA, which we did after that, and we decided on a, a brand-new format. For, uh, for the next submittal, which is May of twenty twenty-five that just passed. So that is part of the AO, the administrative order, that we have to do those semi-annual reports every six months. One's due in May, May first, and one's due in November first, so that, that first one was done. The budget for the fiscal twenty twenty-six, that's, as you know, that's done through December through February. Uh, we, we did submit a sound budget at that point, we added a couple, uh, three articles at that point. Uh, that, one of them was pump and repair and replace. That is, uh, a fairly open article where we can replace anything as far as a pump at the plant. And then also at any of our eleven pump stations out in the field. Uh, the other one is open drainage, which you know from previous meetings, that Sewer Department, uh, regulates the open drainage. That's everything that leads the roads, it goes into headwalls, you know, outfalls, that is all under the purview of the Sewer Department. So we did do a seventy-five thousand dollar article at that point, and that is to engineer, design and construct open drainage projects. Which typically, as far as drainage concerns or, or people reporting to us, or is usually, uh, an open drainage issue. Backups, you know, water receding into the, into the yards, uh, from open drainage culverts, which we try to keep clean. Um, and I know we've touched base on it, but we don't have a collection staff at Sewer Department, so there's actually nobody to do that, so it's all subcontracted out at that point. So we, we did, uh, a line item for that. Uh, wastewater treatment plant upgrades was, uh, again, it was a fairly open article that covers us. These are outside of the wastewater treatment plant upgrades that we currently have a design for, so these are to replace, refurbish and repair any smaller elements of that. That we feel that we need to keep up with, so we're not lacking in those, you know, if there's a pu- another pump or electrical, or, I mean. It's an older plant, which you know, uh, any type of small, moderate upgrade, we have the money for that, besides repair and maintenance. Which, most of that, there's a small percentage of that that's used at the plant, but most of that is done out in the field and collections, so. Um, also at that time, as you know, last, last year at the town meeting was voted on, I did a typo on there, it wasn't twenty million, it was actually, uh, twenty-two million. And that was for the first phase of the plant upgrades, which the town, uh, voted on. That was to supplement the one point five bond and the one million ARPA fund and the twelve point five, twelve point five million that the town appropriated on the town meeting the previous year. So the, the, that total request of that funding was due, uh, this past July, twenty twenty-five. And we submitted it to the DEP as part of the intended use plan, under the parameters of the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, so. Uh, after that, uh, semi-annual compliance report was due again, again in May. We submitted the completely revamped report at that point without any issues moving forward. So at this point, uh, I know I'll touch base on it, but the next one is due in November first, and so now at this point, after revamping, it's just kinda plug-and-play at this point. You know, we had a lot of redundancy in the one that was due last November, and moving forward, again, we, you know, we just add certain elements. Obviously, there's a small amount of development that will go on there, any I, I, excuse me, I and I refurbish, for refurbishment, remediation. That goes into the report as well. Um, let me see, the next one was the IMA, the Inter- Intermeasurable Agreement invoice for Ab- Abington, that's usually, we did that in August and September. And I can't thank Robin enough for that, because she literally does most of that report with, uh, Abington. And that is, they pay, Abington pays for a certain percentage of operations, maintenance, any type of infrastructure or capital improvements we do on our side. Because we do a lot, Abington a small portion of that, which they use mostly on the Spruce Street, Summer Street, Center Ave areas that they pay for. And that's a small percentage of that, and that you could see garnished us for a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, you know, plus some change. Uh, and then the administrative order, so this was our last major submittal besides the semi-annual report. This was due, uh, September thirtieth, so obviously this is, you know, a little over a week ago. Uh, and that was part of the additional alternatives report. So at that point, we did submit, uh, what we thought would be, would cover all the parameters. We have a new contact at the EPA at this point. Our last contact that I've dealt with the last few times I was there was Dave Tarn, he's since then has retired, we have a new one, a new contact there. And at this point, as the submittals were going in back and forth, Wright Pierce does our AO submittal for us in this aspect. And we submitted it as we, with the CWMP. Uh, we had a catalyst grant that we did with, uh, with Town Hall, uh, you know, Courtney helped us with that, Allison helped us with it, Doug helped us with it. The catalyst grant was looking for alternative, alternative discharge points up on the section near, you know, Union Point, Commerce Way. Hingham Street corridor, where the old Cut Through used to be, so we looked at different, uh, discharge areas up there. And maybe now we're looking at the same, same type of, uh, grant, but moving forward, but maybe some way we could use it as a discharge point. But also recharge, maybe something, the aquifer at the water treatment plant at that point. I know some, uh, cities and towns do that as well. Um, also at the same time, this is about a little, October first, we had an energy, a gap for our energy grant, so we submitted that. Which cups up every year, year and a half, we submitted that for variable frequency drives. Uh, the funding request was for three hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's part of the new mechanical room, the blower units that are part of that, uh, which will be part of Phase One. We had a couple, I did have a little redundancy here, because I had another one going, and then Courtney assisted on that one, so we actually had two going at the same time. So we got together and we thought this one would probably have a little bit more, more traction to it, so this is the one we submitted. Which, which is, we, we feel like, you know, we'd have a better, we would have a better, more, you know, I don't know, variables where we could get this one as opposed to the last one we did. The other one were rooftop units, that was over the cam room for another, uh, ventilation type of thing, so, uh. And then the State, State Revolving Fund, submittal for twenty twenty-five intended use plant, uh, that was October third. So that was, that was what, we needed the, uh, authorization for me to file that. So we've already submitted the paperwork for that as part of the IEP, and again, I know I made reference to the, uh, State Revolving Fund, so that's all part of that. Uh, the last aspect for that submittal is obviously that authorization, which will, after you sign it, it will be submitted, uh, by Wright Pierce. Um, let me see what else we have, and as a, just to touch base on that too, the owner-project manager. Um, so the task one through six, which we have under contract, that was with DPC, uh, that was rewarded to them. And the funding for the OPM and the RPR, I just wanna make it clear, it's not part of the SRF funding, but it was part of the ARPA funds that Town Hall. You know, you got, you know, all voted on, part of the ARPA funds, and then, and then the leftover, that would be some development funds, you know. Due to the increases in the, um, the fees, the sewer fees. Um, and last but least, the semi-annual compliance report, that will be due November first, which is obviously around the corner. Um, we're currently working on that report, like I said, it's essentially plug-and-play at this point, there's a small amount of development. Um, and some I and I work we've done, and some refurbishment, uh, this, the Holy Family School would be part of that semi-annual, because it's, it's underway at this point. So that will be part of it. We did, we did also add, um, the Memorial Park disconnect. So when I was there three years ago, we did some I and I work and some camera work, it was never, it was never submitted at that point. So we are submitting it in this round for I and I remediation. So that was, uh, the Memorial Park disconnect, which, and back then, you could, you could tie in all your drainage aspects of an older building into town sewer. So all that's been disconnected, it's a, it's quite a large hit, that along with the Jefferson School disconnect, 'cause there was essentially seven sump pumps tied into that, uh, sewer. And then also, we did the Holy Family School before, 'cause we knew that project was coming online, and that had a six-inch clay segmented pipe. And that had a lot of infiltration in it too. So those will all be submitted, so it's close to twenty-five thousand gallons a day, so, you know, just to keep the, uh, submittals going. Um, any questions on any of that, or do you want me to just keep going on? Okay, uh, keep going. Uh, so I did the projects also in chronological order, you know, so we had a generator replacement project, which you're all well aware of. The, I have really not touched base with, with the board on it, uh, so it was a weird dynamic how it was procured. The, the project was under the previous administration, so what happened is they hired Wright Pierce to actually oversee the project, that, that cost was forty thousand dollars to the town. The, they put the, that out to bid with Wright Pierce, and Wright Pierce handled the bid documents and the overseeing of it. But the, the dynamic, uh, the dynamic, the weird part of the dynamic was that they purchased the generator separately, so it wasn't part of the procurement specs. So that generator came probably about six to eight months earlier than the project started. There was, obviously, the generator, you have a large generator, fairly probably half the size of the one that's out with the Town Hall, that was stored outside. You had a mice infestation on the generator, a lot of electrical components, and some of the other, um, major components of the generator were compromised at that point. So you had a lot of back and forth, um, when we were closing out the project, to say the least. Because you had a generator that was bought by the town of Rockland, with the Sewer Department. You had a, essentially, a project manager, which was Wright Pierce. You had an electrician, or the company Tilden Electric, that was the installer of the generator. And then you also had Cat, which was the owner of the generator, who provided the generator. So a lot of the dynamic of that was a lot of back and forth when we were trying to close out the project. The project went a month over, went a month over the, the limitation that was originally scoped for. Then it was a lot of back and forth again between myself, or the town of Rockland, I being the repres- representative for the town. On who was paying for the, the additional generator. And then who was paying for the components that were down, and then, and then it was, again, it was a lot of back and forth, because we had to prove that it was the mice. And it, and so we compromised, it went like a third, a third, a third, and then we, we ended up closing out the generator.
Can I just ask it, and, and I know you weren't in the position at the time, so it's tough for you to go back. Who was responsible for making the decision to bring the generator onto the property six to seven months beforehand?
I, I, I can't, I don't know who that would be, but I mean, if we were the people that procured the generator, then it would be us, up to us to have the storage for that.
And what was the cost of the generator?
Oh, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, roughly.
And what was the additional cost to the generator, after the damage to the generator that was observed at the time?
We came just shy of two hundred thousand dollars over budget.
Okay, that's good, yeah, alright, carry on.
Yep, uh, and honestly, to, to top it off, the, we will also need another generator, so, for the next phase of the wastewater.
Another generator or, or to replace this generator?
No, you know, we, we need, we would need an additional generator. And, you know, honestly, being a taxpayer, it's obviously frustrating when I see a project like that, so. So now moving on to the wastewater treatment plant upgrades are ongoing. Like I, I made reference to earlier, DPC was hired to represent the town or the owner, project manager for the plan upgrade. Wright Pierce has been, uh, working on the wastewater treatment plant preliminary design. That PDR is at thirty percent, it's been under review. We've done a complete review of preliminary design, we're moving on to the design phase of that. I'm trying to think, uh, so we do have weekly meetings, uh, every Wednesday, we have a Zoom meeting. We have one person, in-person meeting a month. We've had two in-person meetings and we've had obviously every Wednesday meeting till then. Uh, we made, I think we made a, a good decision with DPC. They're very, they're very informative, they've helped us with other aspects not included with this, just for advice. So, you know, I was a little obviously hesitant because I've worked with a lot of other engineers over there and in other aspects, even in our other departments. But, uh, I think we made a sound decision on, at that point on how they're handling the OPM. So then there was a, there was another project started, so the project was originally completed in September of twenty twenty-three. This is an underground storage tank that was an old underground storage tank to hold diesel fuel for the, uh, for the sewer department. Again, I was notified this, I think, January or February of this year that we didn't have accurate submittals to the DEP at that point. Final submittals for, for the project, again, I didn't even know this project happened, so it was right before I came in. So to make a long story short, the UST is a separate department of the DEP. We have to, we have to hire a contractor to come back in, uh, tear up the asphalt that was paved over the, the removal of it. And then we'll have to do soil tests, send it over to DEP. I was, I was unnamed the signatory of that, it takes about roughly three weeks to become the signatory of it. I did get all the approvals, uh, we do have it, uh, set for the end of October, beginning of November. And then at that point, we'll enter the DEP UST portal, do the submissions, we are in contact with them. We'll, we'll send in all the submittals and then we'll, we'll be up to date at that point. Miscellaneous upgrades ongoing, uh, we've done some reconfiguring of the parking lot just to accommodate, you know, the, the more meetings that we're having. That's from, you know, obviously enge- engineers, every different aspect, you know, their engineers, the subcontractors. We've added some ADA parking to that, we've done some IT conference room updates, you know, again, to accommodate the, the meetings. I mean, Gino, the IT, they did a great job on it, it's, uh, state of the art. The facility is being cleaned up, you have roughly ten years, twenty years of just old scrap and pumps and everything else. So, uh, we, we have a good rapport with Viola, you're in the plant manager and the staff and they're, we've, you know, we've got dumpsters in there just cleaning the grounds up and, you know, segueing for whoever comes in later that, they've essentially have a clean slate to start. There's some upgrades to the administration office, we do have a, another administrative assistant in there, so we moved that assistant in with Robin's office. We're going to be going through the wall into the superintendent's office, taking a little space from that and make the administration, uh, a little larger, so it's a good time to do that, obviously with everything coming up. Bathrooms are being redone, you know, just, just updating, no major improvements, just, you know, just sinks and just things that are just kind of just fall on the wayside. We're doing, we've taken, we've had a member of Viola engineering staff that comes from another plant. They came out and we, what we wanted to do is so they don't fall to the wayside, we've looked at every pump station, rate, eight, look at the age that it was up and running, what type of modifications or improvements were done, what need to be done. So we can keep up with those as the wastewater treatment plant upgrades at the plant are being done. So they, so we can keep up with it and all of a sudden we don't have an issue with those. And then have to circle back and say, hey, look, we gotta go look at the, you know, the pump stations at this point. We want to just try to keep up with the maintenance. So we've been doing a lot of brush tree removal around the perimeters, trying to just keep it clean. You know, a lot of, uh, pump repairs, you know, wet well repairs, tank repairs, you know, little things just as far as painting, you know, electrical, all that's being done. You know. The, the other part is projects field collection ongoing, inflow and infiltration. We have Weston and Sampson in to do that, you know, when I was there three years ago, that was the last thing that I did at that point outgoing. We hired Weston and Sampson do the I and I control plan. We have, uh, they're putting out the I and I rehabilitation bid scope, uh, for twenty twenty-six, that's going out over the winter. And all that work's going to start in twenty twenty-six. And I, you, you can see that I did already make reference to the I and I removal reports with the DEP for those, uh, projects at the school. We have another project at Goddard Ave, this has been an area that flattens out. There's been, uh, a few backups both at the high school and then also at the church across the street. We've looked at that, we have those assessed by Weston and Sampson. That's going to be a project which will include, uh, three sewer manhole updates and also about two hundred feet of, uh, new sewer pipe at that point. Uh, the other one is an ongoing issue that dates back about six years ago. The state requested a replacement of about eight or ten manholes that lie in their state format. That format goes from the Abington Town Line and goes all the way to John Dunn Drive. Uh, we did do a submittal, uh, the last time I was there three years ago to the state. Uh, that project wasn't followed up on at that point, so it kind of fell off. Uh, they have a new process for that, so at that point, we had it, we did, we were allowed to do the engineering and do the, uh, DEP submittals based on what they had for guidelines and for I and I. The parameters have changed since, so now you have to actually hire an engineer to do that work, which we had Weston and Sampson go out and assess all the manholes. At this point, it's actually twelve manholes that are on that area. And that's part of the sharps through the Mass DOT, those submittals has already been started. We project that work to start, uh, beginning of spring twenty twenty-six. And then just simple ongoing collections, maintenance of sewer manholes. We have a maintenance program that we're doing on Wednesday evenings. It's just a four hour, we go eight to twelve. We did Reservoir Drive, we've come from Home Depot, the hardest format from the state format, we're down to Reservoir Park Drive at this point. We'd like to, before winter, at least get down to Webster Street, start working some of those lines. We've, you know, we've uncovered a lot of infrastructure that needs improvements on that area that we've already done. You know, those being manholes, a lot of I and I work, a lot of pipes, you know, a lot of laterals, there's a lot of old infrastructure. You know, the old Home Depot was, was never really updated since, what was it? Whaler, Boston Whaler, so you have a lot of that remnants of that infrastructure still there, still tied in. Uh, we have a great, we have a great program with the IPP, which us, us regulating the IPP, going out looking at grease traps at all the various restaurants, you know, commercial properties that discharge into our system, so we do that. I usually do that, uh, early mornings, that's between like five and six-thirty in the mornings, certain days a week, I space it out. We have a good rapport with DEP as far as the IPP program and all our submittals and we are compliant at this point. So that's, uh, that's essentially it.
Anybody have any questions for Dave regarding the sewer plant?
Yes, I have two questions. So you said you're finding all this, uh, I and I repair work you can do as you actually go into the streets. Did, did the smoke tests that were done inform any of this or?
Uh, we did, I mean, the smoke testing was done, but it, uh, what it got back from the smoke testing, uh, was very little. Very little at this point. We'd, we'd have to, we're right now with Weston and Sampson, you'd be looking at, we're looking at different areas that was done during that, those assessments and we'll, we are looking at Concord Street because that's the main trunk line coming into the plant, that's a thirty-inch trunk line. So that is part of the metering program that we have going on right now, so that's going to be, we took the segments from Market to John Dunn. And as you've been, uh, well, you probably wouldn't know, but John Dunn comes from Market Street and actually cuts through the pond. You could see one of the sewer man, or sewer manholes or assets out in the pond, that comes across West Waters Street. So you get a lot of sewer flow from there going down John Dunn, tying into the Concord Street. So that'll be one of the metering areas, the next one would be like Shaw Ave, the next one would be, uh, Summer. And then we have another, we have another meter at the inflow at the front end of the headworks of the plant. So there's been so many tie-ins and you've had so many developments tie into that that we foresee a lot of I and I there, so that's why we're looking at that first. So, so that is a project separate than what, what was identified. That actually was identified by John Loughlin, probably seven or eight years ago. So we just went back to some of those areas that they identified with AECOM years ago. So we're circling back to that.
Well, it's about time. Anyway, my second question is, um, do you ever get any sleep?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Anybody else? So Dave, just a quick question, we heard, we heard a lot in the past that, that fines from the EPA were imminent. How do you feel as though, uh, how do you feel about that statement for one? Uh, and how do you feel the relationship is currently with the EPA? And can we kind of rest as, as a town in the sense that, that you guys are working together and that the EPA is actually not actively out looking to find the town of Rockland, they're just looking to know that we're working on?
Well, like I said, we have a new contact, we had a, we had great relationship with Dave Tarn. And Dave burns at DEP. We have a new one Samantha, that is at EPA. We did the last AO submittal and since then, Chris Kenny, our town consul, who's representing us on the sewer aspects, we're setting up a meeting within a couple of weeks. And then we're going to just see where everybody is, because obviously you have a new set of eyes on it for EPA. You have Dave Tarn that was in that position for over thirty years. So there's been our contact through quite a few superintendents since then. So, I mean, I can't really make an accurate statement on that.
So, but to this point, so I, I guess I can change it and quantify it in the sense of, to this point, working with Dave, the town of Rockland has a good relationship with the, the EPA and that it's, and DEP and we're working, working through the administrative order, meeting the deadlines. And there is no fines that are imminent at this time because you guys are following the process. Now, you're going to meet whoever the new person is that's taking over for Dave over there. And the expectation would obviously be that you continue to work with them and, and give them the information that they're looking for. And it might be an adjustment to the administrative order, but there's nothing imminent in the sense of fines coming our way as long as we continue to follow the administrative order.
I would think with the way that we've been submitting, um, all the AOs and the semi-annials, we haven't gotten anything negative since probably our, the one in November, which I knew was going to be. You know, literally, we had a week to work on it and try to clean it up. And I, and I knew even talking with Doug, I go, I'm, I'm going to get called to the principal's office on this one because it's a, it was just, it was cumbersome in the least, the report that we had before. And I was surprised we haven't, we didn't get called out on it. And like I said, since then, we hired Weston and Sampson to assist us on that, we cleaned the whole report up, we haven't had any issues since. And I would imagine the EPA and DEP, they can see what we're investing in as a town. You know, there was a lot of opera funds, we've, we've committed to recouping the I and I remediation. We've, we have an I and I control plan, we have a thirty-five million dollar wastewater treatment plant upgrade, phase one. I would think they're going to, they're going to look at all that and the rational thought, I would think at that point is, you know, we've committed a huge investment for the town. So I would, I would think they would, they would take all that in at that point.
And how have we been, uh, as far as, you know, meeting our, meet for permit and capacities?
I, I think we, we've done a lot of maintenance work down there with Viola. We've been using a lot of our, so we, in our contract, we have a lot of credits for, for, for additional engineering with Viola. So I, I, I have a, a good rapport with the president, one of the presidents over there. And we kind of can flex out, obviously, because, you know, we're only through a few years of our contract, so we can kind of use that as a little bit of a bargaining chip. And then, so they bring in a lot of engineering staff and they have found different ways we can get a little bit more, even piping capacity at our plant, even where we could holding capacity. Like a lot of those, we got, just say you have a cup and a quarter of that cup is full of sediment and we clean that cup, you have more volume. So that's essentially what we're doing at the plant. So that, I, we haven't had any major issues, knock on wood, so.
Okay, alright, if nobody has any other questions for Dave regarding sewer, I will let him, uh, take a few minutes and he can put on his highway hat. We'll talk to some other people.
I think I'm going to get skipped over a couple.
You're going to get skipped over, we'll let you take a break so you can refocus. Thank you, Dave, appreciate your time. Alright, uh, next on the agenda, Rockland Veterans Agent and Rockland Allied Veterans Council Chairman, Tri-Town Veterans Day update, Tim Whitman. Tim, open.
Captain Jerry is not going to make it. So, um, I'm here to talk about Veterans Day this year, uh, the town of Whitman. And, uh, I would say all the veterans organizations, uh, have opted to do a Veterans Day celebration, uh, not a parade in Whitman. So just started a couple of weeks ago as I reported.
So, I, I just want to interrupt you for a second before you go on, because I'm sure you've come up with a plan already, uh, to, to do a celebration. I just want to express that I, I, I am not disappointed in you, but I'm disappointed that the end of the tri-town parade has come to fruition. You and I talked about this about a year ago because it sounded as though the town of Whitman's veterans agent didn't have any interest in, in running this parade this year. And we put together, I, I think, some pretty decent efforts to try to coordinate with veterans from Abington and from Rockland to continue this tradition. So for me, just somebody that, I think it's important for kids to attend Veterans Day parades so that they can understand what the sacrifices are that are being made by, by these individuals. It's, it's disheartening, that it's ending after all these years of, of being running with that, I'll let you carry on.
Alright, uh, yeah, I think the, I'll just speak on behalf of the veterans organizations. You know, I've reported this in the past. They are looking to pass the baton to a younger generation and the younger generation's just not there right now. Uh, I have, in the meantime, uh, in the past few months, as I've met younger veterans, uh, come to my office, I brought this up to them and, and talked to them. For the most part, they're working on Veterans Day, uh, to get the day off after Thanksgiving. You know, the few that I've talked to didn't really have an interest in participating in a parade. So the. It's a change in paradigm, but it kind of is an outreach effort to connect and have a Veterans Day celebration. So what they're opting for, just to go into that, is the Whitman VFW will host and, uh, they're going to do, it's going to be on Sunday, November ninth, noon to three PM. They're going to do a cookout, hamburgers, hot dogs, they're going to have bouncy houses for kids, uh, music, other things, whatever, whatever they're coordinating. I'm not sure if they're going to have balloon animals and stuff like that, uh, to try and attract, uh, say, some of the younger families. And they've chosen to do that on a Sun, that's a Sunday afternoon because still a lot of people work on Saturdays and they looked at Sundays, the best opportunity when, uh, people would be off and, you know, we can kind of, and it's not during church hours and so forth. So they're trying to maximize the opportunity, uh, to gain some traction and, uh, really kind of increase it as an outreach event, if you will.
So are we still maintaining the tri-town presentation?
Yes. So, uh, initial talks and there's still planning meetings, but they're going to have the Whitman Hanson High School Band, do National Anthem, service songs.
And what do the outreach be on this?
What's that?
What's the outreach plan on this, I'm, I'm creating a buzz about this?
Social media, post flyers, I'm, I'm going to ma, I've been writing down names to try and make phone calls, you know, connect, get people there. You know, most likely, anecdotally, with, with Whitman hosting, they're probably going to have the most veterans there just because it's right there. But, you know, how many other veterans from the other towns can we, uh, get to support the event? And family members, surviving spouses, et cetera. We are going to have contact cards, um, the veterans agents are obviously going to be there, uh, meet and greet veterans, um, and try and connect. And I, I think the measurement, uh, for us is, you know, have everybody fill out these contact cards and then we can kind of know, okay, how many people from Rockland came and supported it, Abington, Whitman. and then we can kinda know, okay, how many people from Rockland came and supported it, Abington, Whitman, et cetera. So, yeah, they, they wanna try that and give it a shot. So, that's, that's what has been ruminating for a little while. And, 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 you know, I've reported to, like, all these organizations, they're all older, they're in poor health. I mean, you know, the average age might be eighty. And, you know, they're older than the tri-town parade. And, you know, so, somebody else has gotta, you know, pick up the baton. So, you know, the groups been talking about this, we're excited about a change and, you know, maybe a little new energy in the room to try and do something different, to, to connect. So, that's what I have to report.
Anybody have any questions, or comments?
Some comments, I think what, what the veterans are experiencing are, is similar to what we're experiencing for lack of volunteers in town. This, this next generation, our generation, really a lack of folks stepping up to, to wanna take the baton. I'm hopeful that an event like, like that allows for more conversation. Cause I think that'll help drive interest in, in taking the baton. Because it would be a real shame to see it deteriorate further. And I'll say, my kids are, are pretty unhappy about the, the parade going away too, Mike. I just wanna take a moment and commend you again for the work you've done, Hero Act stuff at town meeting. I know you had talked in the past about needing a committee to be formed to approve a lot of that stuff. Do you have any updates on, on where that's going, or?
Perfect segue, I've asked a number of people, I've gotten nothing, like a veterans relief committee. We were looking for three people. And, I, I was looking for new blood as well in participating in that, and I haven't received.
I may have a couple of names for you, I'll reach out after the meeting.
All right, all right.
Yeah, it is, it is, just to echo kinda what Steve said, it is a pretty sad state that we're in at the point where, you know, we can't get people to, to join boards and committees. But, you know, and I understand it, and I'll never question, or, or, you know, denigrate somebody for, for not choosing to do something. Obviously, the veterans, that, the younger veterans have their reasons. And, you know, it's, it's a little bit different, I think, now too. A lot of them have joined into local police departments, local fire departments, so they do have, you know, full-time jobs that they're working on. And, and I get it, and sometimes people don't have, there's not enough free time for anybody in this world these days to, to take on, you know, joining a, a board or a committee, or, or joining a veterans organization, you know, if they have other responsibilities, and I get that. And, and I'm not mad at the veterans, I'm not mad at, at anybody in particular, certainly not mad at you, Tim. You know, that's, so don't take it that way, I'm, I'm just mad about the situation in general. Because, you know, as I talked to you before, Memorial Day, Memorial Day having a, a thing at the monument is, is fantastic, because that's a day of remembrance, right? Whereas Veterans Day is a day of celebration. And, and I think, think back to when my kids were younger, there are always teachable moments to explain to your kids what, what the reason, why those, those men and women are walking in the street, you know?
Right.
And, and I feel, you know, it's different, different not having that be an option for this next generation. And you, you hope that, that knowledge and respect i- isn't, isn't lost going forward, you know? But, you know, I, I am excited that you guys decided to stay as tri-town. You know, I, I think that that, that will help drive the numbers. And then, you know, I, I envision, when's our year, next year?
Next year.
Next year, so I envision probably something at the Veterans Stadium. You know, i- if you do something very similar, you know, Veterans Memorial Stadium might be an opportunity.
I'll learn a lot this year.
Yep.
I have some ideas of my own, but the, the group is kinda driving things right now. And, and we'll see how Whitman runs it, and, you know, what their philosophy is and, and bringing different elements to the day.
And I'm sure we'll, whatever they do, we'll improve upon that going forward. And, you know, with that, whatever, whatever help you need, whatever, you know, voices we can, we can lend to, to assist you. You know, again, I don't wanna speak for everybody, but I'm sure everybody, I'm seeing heads nodding, so I, I think they, they pretty much agree with, with my sentiments on, on this matter, so.
I just wanted to say one more thing, that, you know, volunteering for boards and committees, running for office in general, it helps to cultivate our community, creating a, a town that we want to live in. And, and having as many different voices at the table as possible is how you, you know, kinda foment change. And, and so I encourage, does it have to be a veteran that is on the, this committee you're looking for, or three people?
I don't think so, I don't think there's anything that dictates that.
So, there you go. So, again, here's another brilliant committee to help out the vets in town that's open for anyone to just step up.
Right.
And join, so.
And really, just to, for the record, it's an evaluation of a veteran's situation and how we can best assist that veteran with monetary, with funds to take care of an issue. And if it's fixing an engine in a car or something like that, that's something that I, I really don't do now, but with the Veterans Support Fund, I can do that. But with the Relief Committee, you're, you're evaluating a situation, you know, and gathering paperwork, bank statements, stuff like that, to evaluate, you know, should we support this person's need? Is it under our purview and so forth? And, and the end result is, you're helping a veteran move forward in their life with whatever problem circumstance they're, they're facing at that moment. And there's all different ways to, you know, maybe you, you can provide them a service and, you know, or connect them through a network of, of people and assist that, that veteran with whatever needs that need to be met. And that's what the Relief Committee would be all about, in trying to evaluate that type of situation.
So, so how, how much of a need is there for something like this? And how much time would you, would you say it would take?
Most, most likely, I think it would be a quarterly meeting. But, then again, it, it just depends on the number of, say there's an application, you know, somebody's applying for the need. You know, it could be an impromptu call and hey, can we meet within a week to deal with their situation, that type of thing. But I, I would suspect largest gap would be quarterly, and maybe shorter than there. But I, there's not too many. And in, in addition, I mean, I have access to the Rockland Veterans Group, 501(c)(3). They do the same thing, it's very helpful. And they're actively helping veterans in the community right now. But, being in my position, I'm kinda the driver of, I'm the first person, so I'm meeting and listening to what their issue is, and what's the best way to help them. And so, having, having access to a Veterans Support Fund and a Veterans Relief Committee, you know, you can take care of it right there.
Yes, that's an extra resource.
Right.
Yeah, how many veterans are in Rockland?
I think there's, last census was eight thirty-one, I think.
Wow.
And, and in addition, I, I don't know how many surviving spouses I helped, but I'm guessing a hundred and fifty more, you know? You know, anywhere from a hundred to two hundred anyway of surviving spouses who are eligible for veteran benefits either through the state or through the VA.
Right, so it's like a thousand people.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and I, I will say, the office is busy. I get walk-ins every day, I've scheduled appointments every day, never mind other things going on. And when I meet somebody, really it's an assessment of their situation, because we're talking, you know, in-depth medical stuff, what kind of documents do we need to gather? What do you already have, what do we need to get to support a claim through the VA or a case through Massachusetts Veteran Benefits? So, sometimes it's a multi-meeting. You know, I'm gonna meet the first time, we're gonna meet and greet, kinda get to know each other, this is what we have to work on, oh, you, you know, please go talk to your doctor, confirm what diagnosis you have. Sometimes they don't know, or they use different terminology, and, and it has to be specific. So, I have to learn diagnosis, symptoms and treatment to support these cases. So, you know, it's a, it's a dialogue, I meet a veteran, I could be sitting down with him for an hour, and then, you know, hey, we'll get together as soon as you meet the doctor, and in a week or so, come back in, we're gonna finish the claim. So, that's how I work, anyway.
Anybody else? Tim, thank you for your time, thanks for all your hard work.
Yep.
Thank you.
Definitely appreciate it.
Mike, can I add one thing?
You can.
While, while Tim's heading out. I don't wanna get into any details, but I do want the board to know that we are actively working on a solution to get a more appropriate office space for the veterans agent. Been working with Courtney on this quite a bit, so we do have a plan, it's complicated, but we're working on it, and we hope to implement something this year, this fiscal year, so. I don't wanna get any more details.
And as I've said to everybody else, if there's any assistance that you need from us, then we'd be glad to assist. Appreciate that, so. Okay, Tim, thank you. Next on the agenda, Recreation Director, Jean Whiney. You're next, Dave, you're next. He's gotta get up at five thirty.
Hi, everyone.
Jean, welcome.
So, I'm here to give you a little bit of an update on what we've been doing. I don't remember the last time I was here, to be truthful. But, back in June, we hired Stephanie, she's a new administrative assistant, she's doing fabulous. Everyone in our department is assisting her to learn the ropes. She got thrown into summer, so, you know, she's still with us, so that's good. Summer's always one of our busier times, so that's great. So, Steph's still here, and then Olivia, you've seen her come quite a few times as our event manager, and she's doing well with all of her events. It doesn't go without a lot of questions, but she's, she's doing fabulous, so that was a great choice. So, speaking of summer, our Chipmunk Program, we have our regular Hard South Park program, so we have our Chipmunks, our Explorers, and our Teen Adventures. So, for our Chipmunks, we had approximately a hundred and forty-four registrations for that program, eight hundred and fifty-six for our Explorers. The Explorers are the elementary school age kids. And then our Teens, we had two hundred and ninety-six registrations. So, we've had a lot of kids, we are at capacity, absolutely at capacity, we can't take anymore. And that is because of regulations with toilets and, and shelter and so on and so forth. I, I could kind of go on a little bit, but, so we're kind of at capacity, which means that we had thirty people, approximately thirty people, on and off different weeks for on our waiting list. We tried to get as many people off as we could, as quickly as we could. So, if somebody canceled, we'd start calling around and trying to find people to get into our program. So, new this summer with that program, we had no field trips for our elementary school kids. We, that was at a lot of parents' requests. Not to mention the fact that the buses are astronomical amount of money to rent a bus. So, we did that, the numbers increased a small amount on Fridays for us, which we thought was pretty good. And the kids had a lot of fun, I brought in entertainment, not every single week, but just, just about every single week, they had something different and new planned. The kids liked it, everybody had fun, and everybody went home tired and dirty, which is what you want. So, then, beyond that, we had a great baseball clinic down at, on Spring Street. I wanna say we had somewhere between forty-five to fifty-five kids, all ages. I know that they use three fields down there, so that was great. Our Drama Kids Program went off pretty well, we had about twenty kids there. We had Archery also at the same time down at Hard South Park, always a very good program, but this year we seem to have more interest, we actually turned people away. So, we're looking forward to hopefully adding more Archery program. Next summer, and then we do have a partnership with the North and South River Watershed Association. It's an outdoor program for kids. It runs a, it runs Monday through Thursday, Friday being the alternate day if it rains. We had fifteen kids in each one of those programs, they pile those kids in a van at, at Hard South Park, and then they go to different areas, so they don't just stay at Hard South Park, they go to Norwell, they go to Hingham. Great program, the kids hike, they see different things, that's one of my favorites, because it's all outdoors and they come home tired and dirty as well. Last year, we partnered with WRPS, and we did that again this summer. They had a great, they ran their great program, it's kind of a sampling of everything that they do at WRPS. And if anyone has a child that's interested in any type of communication, radio broadcasting, behind the scenes, it is a fantastic program, they do great stuff, so. The only thing that was not successful, which let's face it, there's not many, but our STEAM programs were not that great. We really attribute that to the fact of the cost of the program. So, all of these STEAM programs come with a lot of stuff, whether it's a science program or an art program, and you have to pay for those supplies. And the instructors are not exactly cheap either. So, some of these instructors, I think what people don't understand, they come from MIT. They don't, they're not just our, our neighbor down the street. But they're, they're, they're very well qualified for what they do, and they just wanna work with children and teach them and try to, you know, foster that love for science and art and all those other types of programs. So, we really hope that the community takes a little bit more interest in it and just understand that the cost is not the recreation department adding cost onto it, it's the cost of the actual instructors and the programs and everything that goes into it. So, our teen center, hot topic, I don't know if anybody's been on social media, our teen center is doing fabulous this year, but last year we had well over eleven hundred registrations, that's averaging approximately fifty children per night. This year, we lost two people, one was a volunteer, one was paid staff member, so I am looking for someone else, actually, I'm looking for a three someone else, so three additional people to put on staff, so that we can take more people. You know, there's, there's a lot of talk on Facebook, I can't believe it's closed out. It's been out there for a while, you can register for as many weeks as you want, so we certainly encourage that. I will say, the sixth grade this year, they, they dominate, and those parents are on top of it, and they've registered their children, so it's a good problem to have. So, we're looking for that, they must be eighteen years of old, older, have graduated high school. Just because of the nature of the program, we were, we are really looking for adults, college kids, for that particular program. Just to spin off a little bit on the, all of the teen programs, we've, I've had inquiries into my office, why don't you run more teen programs? Well, some of the programs that we do run are actually for teens, they just don't register. So, they continuously, we put it out there, we do have some vol, we have a volleyball program, where we do have teens that actually register for that program. We've tried to do pickleball before, we've tried to do footsaw before, and we've tried to do basketball before. Those have all canceled, the only one that is still alive and kicking, if you will, is volleyball. So, I really hope if anyone out there hears this, please let them know that we are trying, and really, they just have to register. And it's a great way for the kids to just try something, right? When you're a teen and you've never tried volleyball before, but I really wanna try it for the high school team, yeah, come and try it, or even soccer for that matter, or basketball, gosh, I really don't know how to shoot a basket. Yeah, this is your time to go and, and try it out so that you can hopefully make that high school team. Our adult programming went fantastic last year, we did, we had, pickleball was our number one with over twelve hundred registrations for our pickleball program. Body Blast, which is a workout program, we had about ninety-three registrations. Yoga was seventy-five, and line dancing was thirty-four. So, those are our adult one, and our new partnership with the Rockland Golf Course, we are starting both child and adult golf classes at the Rockland Golf Course. So, I kinda gave you my two cents on the teen programming, all the other popular programs for the younger kids, basketball, volleyball, tot soccer, gymnastics, our kids' test kitchen program, Drama Kids, and our cupcake program. So, so that's it, about those particular programs. And then, with our events, we just had Fall Festival, thank you everyone that came, we really appreciate it. We especially wanna thank all the departments that were involved, because without them, we really would not be able to do this. So, and Dave's in the room, thank you, Dave, we appreciate it, I think they have fun doing the candy drop. And it really is a collaborative effort, so behind the scenes, we do meet a couple of times with all these department heads to figure out any kinks that need to be worked out throughout the day. But we wanna recognize Mountain One, Sullivan Tire, Briggs Engineering, A.W. Perry, Land Rover of Rockland, Phelps Insurance, Top Line Services, Ira Volvo BMW, and Players as some of our top sponsors. There are other sponsors that got involved, they're smaller sponsors, and we appreciate everything that they've done. There are other sponsors that got involved, they're smaller sponsors, and we appreciate everything that they've done. We saw a lot of young families. It was a steady flow of people, and I really do feel like we had something for everyone there that day. So, on to our next one. We have Terror on the Trails coming up on October 25th. That will be at Hartsough Park. It is a jump scare. It is not for kids, even though you think your kids are really hardy. And I know people who, some kids are fine with it, but some kid, little kids are not, and this isn't for that. The high school does a great program where they do their trunk-or-treat, or they do trick-or-treating through the hallways. I recommend that, I always recommend everybody to go to the high school to do that because they do a fantastic job at that. And then after Terror on the Trails, we will have the Holiday Stroll, which we're working on all of that right now. Other events that we had last year, I'm just going to touch on a couple. The Extreme Egg Hunt that we had, and this, I didn't, this is in order, but we, the egg hunt that we had for the kids was about 220 registrations. That means that's families that came, so that's not per person. And the Candy Cane Hunt was 175. And then lastly, the adult egg, the adult egg hunt was 154, plus there were other people that showed up at the door. So, that about wraps it up. There's just one other thing that I wanted to mention, actually, two projects. I approached Chief Duffy about putting AED units in all of our parks. And, you know, emergency situations are near and dear to my heart. We see a lot out there, whether it's an overdose or somebody that has a heart attack. So, he obliged, as always, and found some money. So, we will be installing AED, AED units in each one of our parks, with Jefferson being the last park, just because it's, the Parks Department is working on that project. So, you can see those being installed probably within the next month. I don't really have a live date. That's, the chief actually needs to coordinate with the 911 operators, although he's been having that conversation. So, we're super excited about that. And two things that we want to add to those, or that the chief would like to add, is Narcan in each one of those, as well as Stop the Bleed. So, so, it's a great project. It's myself, the Parks Department, Deli's actually looking into getting us the Narcan, and, yeah, and the, and the chief's leading the band. So, there was that project. And then some, you may see at Hartsough Park, we might be taking some trees down. It's not that we don't love the trees, they're dead, and they're splitting, and they're dangerous. We have some leaners, widowmakers, as some people would say, when they nicely email me and Justin. So, you'll see Justin and I in the park. That should be happening within the next month or two. I think that's it.
Anybody have any questions or comments, Jean?
Yes, yes. Amazing job and good collaborative teamwork with different departments. You're amazing.
Thank you. Thank you. Do it alone, though.
Yeah, I know, I know. And I just wanted to hone in on the pickleball.
Yep.
Class. And that's like arguably the largest sign up that you get. Pickleball is still hot, and, you know, I talked to Doug, I talked to Courtney about it. We need a pickleball facility in Rockland, and, you know, we bring people in from other towns. It would be fantastic. And, you know, if we cap the dump, I mean, I vote for definitely having that capability there. That's just my comment.
Same.
Anyways.
Yeah. First of all, thank you for everything you do. You're an asset to this town, you and your team. Fall Fest was amazing, the amount of people there. Someone had some drone footage that they posted. It was such a surreal sight to see. Such a wonderful day, and the weather was great to boot, so that was great. A thought that I had related to the Narcan in the parks, which I think is an awesome idea. We've talked, we have the opioid settlement funds, and one of the targets that the state has for those opioid settlement funds is distribution of Narcan in the communities. It's something that we really haven't looked into deeply as a town, so it's another funding opportunity if Deli hits a roadblock there.
Okay. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyways. Jean, great, great job, great job. Fall Fest was great. And, you know, to hear you say that the summer program is at capacity is amazing because, you know, you obviously, you know, we were here during COVID, and, you know, we had some major concerns, and I keep going back to this. It was a department that seemed like it may not go on, and to build it back after that, that's incredible. There are, I do have a couple ideas. Maybe we can talk, you know, offline, I don't want to put it out there quite yet, but to expand the capacity for that program, that might help you out a little bit.
Great.
That's another conversation.
Okay.
In the meantime, Jean, great job. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you do and your team.
Take care. Thanks, guys.
Good day, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, Highway Superintendent, Dave Taylor. Dave, welcome back.
Good evening. Well, this is a little shorter, so. So, I just, I just touched base on some bullet points on some larger projects. This doesn't really consist of the everyday maintenance, you know, sweeping, cutbacks, brush cutbacks, any of that, day-to-day operations. So, we have multiple road projects going on right now. We have the Turner Road, French Road, French Ave, Townsend Way, Old Country Way. Those were all, those roads were all milled a couple of weeks ago. They were leveled out. They'll have two courses of pavement installed. A few of those areas, we had major drainage repairs and refurbishment done. So, we are going to repurpose some of the curbing that we have from other projects that will go up there. Small amount of curbing compared to our other curbing projects, mostly where the drainage aspects are on those roads. We do have those being top coated within two weeks, so it's going to be rather a quick turnaround for us. I did note, you know, where, we always try to put out there where the funds are actually coming from. Some of the funding for those were, were from National Grid to remediation. I don't know if I've touched base on this before, for any time National Grid does work in town, and it's gas work, and they do trench work, what we do is we, we kind of bargain with them on what the remediation's going to be, whether they pave the road or we pave the road. So, National Grid subcontractors roughly charge about $250 a ton. We have procurement, you know, just under 100 a ton, where they might do half of a road, and we could do a full road. So, we wait. So, I know a lot of people, you know, they don't understand, why isn't this getting paved? Because we wait at least a year and one winter for the trenches to settle, because they will. So, if we paved that any earlier than that, you would have a road that would be subpar at that point.
And I think it's important to point out that, that that's a practice that you, you kind of brought in because the previous way, we had a lot of patchwork being done on the roadway. And National Grid wasn't meeting our town standards for, for the roads. So, obviously, we appreciate the relationships that you've created with them to negotiate that and make the roads, you know, meet the standard of the town.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
We have a big meeting with National Grid over the winter, but we have probably six meetings a year with them, both on, on the electric side and on the gas side. So, Plain Street is obviously one of those also that falls underneath the National Grid remediation. That was done extensively a couple of years ago. We did a curb and walk project on that as well, and some of the approaches from some of the side streets, Pace and Ave, Prospect Street, Highland. So, that is actually one of the roads. So, all those roads will be getting done about the same time. That road will be shimmed, so it won't be milled like the other roads. So, shimmying would be they level out the trenches, get some crown back into the road because it flattens out near the intersections where water sits, and then we'll overlay that whole road. The approach is again consisting of Highland, Pace and Ave, Williams, Prospect. We're going to, we're actually overlay that all the way to the West Water intersection just because it's really in rough shape, that approach. We do plan on going back to that intersection. I know water has some improvements to do there, so that's why we stop short of that intersection. Usually, we like to try to encompass the intersections at these points because they're usually the hardest aspect of any project, the intersections on those approaches. So, we'll be going back to West Water at another point. So, essentially, those, you know, six or seven roads, if you look at what we did, just to touch base, what we used to do, we used to do 20, 20 roads a year, you know. Our Chapter 90 roughly is level funded what it was, you know, 10 years ago. We made another three grand. There have been some, you know, additional funding on those, you know, from the state. But, you know, we're doing, you know, roughly half the amount of roadwork now because, you know, when I, when I came in, we were paying under $60 a ton. Now, we're, we're just under 100, you know, and depending on sidewalks, if you're doing sidewalks, it's double that, so, for handwork. We got multiple sidewalk and curb projects going on. We have Belmont, Pacific Upper Reed, you know, that was a town article back in '24. We've done, you know, obviously, major, we try to do major drainage improvements when we're doing any of our projects beforehand. Usually, if we're doing the drainage improvements are a year or two before we're doing a road or a curb project. We reach out to water, we reach out to sewer, try to get all those aspects. Gas is usually two to three years before us we try to get done. We make all of those departments and all the infrastructure utilities sign off before we do any of these projects so we know, you know, if there was an issue, like we had an issue probably five years back on Liberty Street where gas had to come back in, they actually had to pay for the overlay on that, on that road in the, in the micro. So, we hold all the utilities accountable at that point. North Ave, so North Ave is a combination of a, of a town article and also a grant that we received last year. That was a $500,000 Complete Streets Grant. That's our second Complete Streets Grant. That on top of the, you know, Chapter 90 of the town article that was voted in last year. This will be a three-year project, very reminiscent of the Spring Street, Summer Intersection, and Beet Street project. Again, these projects, if we do the town articles, it spreads it out, so we don't have to do any type of a, you know, debt inclusion or, you know, any going for additional funds that works out. We try to parlay these with when we get grants. So, you know, if we get a grant for a Complete Streets, then we'll be looking at updating all the infrastructure at the same time on North Ave, and that's from the Abington Town Line all the way up to Union Street. We started on the Abington Town Line because you're dealing with Plain Street, and that is our last major intersection. And then it's a straight run from here on out for the next couple of years, so.
Hey, Dave, I want to interrupt you for a second. I get questions from residents if the sidewalks on North Ave are going to be on both sides.
Anywhere where there's existing sidewalks and curbing is where we're going to be replacing.
Okay.
Yep. And then we see where we lie towards the end of the project. Again, these projects, we need the three years because we roughly do about a third of the work in-house. Hence why a lot of these projects take longer, but also it extends the funding, you know, the, they go a long way. If we're doing a third of the work, we're saving roughly a third. We're doing all the demolition, you know, we're doing all the pole of the sidewalks, the curbing. You know, we set the offsets, you know, we pay for a survey essentially. And then we do all the initial grading before the sidewalks get paved. So, the curbing is subcontracted out, and the, and the paving is subcontracted out. Everything else, all the finished work is, is done in-house, you know, all the connections to people's sidewalks, you know, their driveway aprons, that's, all those accommodations are done in-house. So, we save a tremendous amount of money, so I can't thank our crew enough for that, so. I throw a lot at them, to say the least, so. Conca Street, so that's part of a developing, a developer remediation project. So, the Developer 365, which is known as Concord Meadows. So, we go back and forth. What we did is we took, they had two sidewalks in the project. We had them to pull one side of the sidewalk out for the 19 units and had them do the curbing in the sidewalks on Conca Street, which obviously would be more affected, and more effective for us for pedestrian flow. So, they roughly owe us 1,200 linear feet. They're going to come out and head down towards Summer Street, and then we'll make the, the town or the highway, we'll do the connection over to Summer Street and make that crossing ADA and compliance friendly at that point. We've had many people ask about that connection because obviously you have a few developments on Conca Street, and then you also have Esten School, so we want to try to make that a little bit more compliant than what it is right now. That timeline on that project's going to start 2026. Originally was scheduled for this, this summer, but it got carried over to 2026, so. Multiple miscellaneous projects. I have the Mullen, Mullen Park at East Water Union Street. You know, we had a lot of people approach us years ago. As Steve knows, I went to, you know, the CPC multiple times. We've had to, it went from a smaller project to a bigger project because we were able to get the easements and an agreement with the owner. I mean, we own, just so people know, we own on the backside of our sidewalks four feet. So, we also own a drainage easement that runs through that property that goes through and ties into where the old Buckley Corp is, where Electro Switch is, where our, where a lot of our drainage on Union Street cuts through. And then we also own 30 feet off the center line of the tracks. So, if you look at where we kept the tracks, that project goes 30 feet. You can see that there's a little fence slash wall over to the right. That project goes all the way past that, past that wall. So, we own all the parking spaces on the, on the backside of that, of that project, and then another 30 feet in this way. So, we butt right up to the building, you know, and also where they have the glass enclosures actually on our, on our property, or hence DCR slash Town of Rockland property that, that we maintain. So, but that's, obviously, you know it's going to be dedicated on the 18th. We're going to, we're, we're down to most of the work there. We're just going to be adding the, the seats, the tables, you know, trash receptacles. We just had a floodlight installed by National Grid, so it's lit up at night, so for security reasons, obviously, but that's always been a dark area. And so, that's a, you know, I think that's a really good project. We had a lot of people approach us. They wanted to sit in the area, and that's about the halfway point between Hanover and through Abington. So, I think it adds a nice finishing touch to the rail trail.
I had a quick question. I hear rumors that there might be one of those butterfly wall murals where you stand up with the wings.
Yeah, well, we have, well, we, well, that's a project. We've been, we've been sitting on those butterfly chairs for, since 2019, 2020. It was part of the, remember the Soul of Rockland Project, the cultural grant back in 2019, 2020? So, part of that is, we worked, it was, we worked on it with, you know, Reimagine Rockland, and then, you know, the town, Town Hall, and then the high school had a, had an aspect of that where there was five butterfly chairs, like a heavy gauge steel. All the kids painted them. I know my son was one of the, you know, the, one of the kids that, you know, painted one of the butterfly chairs. So, they've been kind of sitting because, you know, COVID came, and then things just got pushed to the backside. We beefed up like the, the anchoring mechanism. They came in on like wooden dowels, so we beefed them up so they could actually support. They're pretty cool, but again, they've been sitting in storage, so we, you know, we figured at that point it would be a nice aspect off to the right there. We, it was a butter, going to be a butterfly wall, but once we started getting prices on the walls, it went to a fence. I couldn't put up a $15,000, $20,000 wall to paint butterflies on. It's not, we're not doing a.
It really costs.
Do dillards. Yeah, yeah, without a doubt. Freestanding concrete wall or any type that, you know, it'd have to be beefed up, footings, everything else. So, so, we, you know, we retrofitted the fence in, it was like a third of the cost or a quarter of the cost. So, we have a muralist coming in, it's going to essentially do a takeoff like what Nashville has with the angel wings, be the butterfly wings on that. We know the kids like to do the selfies, and hopefully, that'll be a spot for it. We did a little, there's some shrubbery there, butterfly bushes, and anything that will attract butterflies, obviously. And then, you know, obviously, the park is going to be named after, you know, the fallen fighter, fighter Mullen. That bronze plaque just went in over the weekend, so that unveiling will be, you know, roughly 10 days from now. So, you know, feel it's going to be an asset for the town, and it's a nice drawing point. You know, I feel it came out really well, so.
Yeah, I took a walk up there last week. It looks, it looks great.
Yeah.
Everything came out great.
Yeah. So, you know, our department's pretty proud of the project in itself, so. You know, one of the other projects, it's Police Station.
Dave, very briefly, just, just before you move on, a project, a park of that scale and size typically goes for about how much?
Well, my previous lifetime, I mean, if you could look at 10 years ago, I probably would have charged between the design, the construction of that project, well over three.
And would you get it done at?
I think we're a little over 120 or so. You know, we did it in two, two phases. I think we're a little over one twenty or so. You know, we did it in two, two phases roughly. Yeah.
Yeah, because I've heard a lot of questions about, you know, the cost and stuff like that. And obviously it came from Community Preservation and it's been talked about. It was voted at a town meeting. Everything was approved. But still, obviously people are going to complain about costs, but, you know, as long as people are aware that you did everything you could to cut the cost as much as possible. Because a project like that, even years ago before COVID, to, to your point, your previous lifetime as a landscaper, would have been three hundred thousand. So it could potentially be a five hundred thousand dollar project at this point with, with construction costs and stuff.
I mean, we did designs like that. I mean, I worked for the city of New Bedford.
Yep.
Uh, we did something similar down there. It was well over three.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that was ten years ago.
Yep.
So.
Right.
Same scope. So essentially I stole a lot of the aspects from that. So.
All right.
Yeah. Uh, one of the other projects, obviously the Police Station, that has been over to a binder, binder coat for a year. It's settled. Tiny bit, you know, we're going to be doing the top coat on that. That's also the access road, uh, that comes around the back, the emergency access and also the rail trail. So we've done some safety modifications there where we, we split the rail trail access and the pedestrian flow from the emergency vehicles that use that as an egress. So, uh, that's also going to be a little sitting area, you know, coming up. There'll be some tables behind there. We're looking at a mural project on the backside of Richdale's, you know, with Cooney. So we're looking at that. You know, with Town Hall and trying to work with them and doing that as one of the mural projects. You know, the owners are excited about it. Um, you know, we granted them an easement for the dumpsters to be on the sides of the building, mostly on our town properties. So we had to split that. And then also the road coming in from Market Street. So all that's going to be upgraded and make it a little bit more user friendly. We, we did the RFBs, which are the push button crosswalk systems, solar systems there, even if it's a crossing at the Police Station. So. Uh, so that's obviously another big project. And then, uh, then the Highway Parking Lot is one of our other bigger projects where, that we're going to go over to the binder coat this year. And, uh, and then we'll finish that up next year. So that's in roughly, rough shape, to say the least. That's been the same binder coat from ninety-nine and, and it was never top coated at that point. So we're actually looking forward to that. Not having to fill potholes in the old parking lot. So, so that'll be good. And I just touched base on some drainage projects, just so people know. We have a drainage project that we're looking at at East Water Street, Cushing Brook. That's a, that area on the backside of that is blown out. Uh, we have, we're working with the North and South River Watershed on a grant on that, which I, which is pretty exciting. And that's not just for that, but that, you know, as a culvert, culvert grant, but also a couple of other tributaries and crossings for upstream. So we're looking at that. So, uh, I did the, I did the grant writing seminar over in Hanover two weeks ago. And it's exciting. We're one of the priorities listed by them. So that's exciting to see. Um, and then Rice Ave area, we have mostly, you know, attributed to open drainage areas on the front side and the backside. That that ranges from like sixty-five Rice Ave up to one twenty-five. We're looking to set up easements there because a lot of our drainage where we dump, we don't really have true easements per se. So we have to get these easements established so we can do work in those. So that would be the first perimeter we have to set up, part of the scope and then engineering. And then how we're going to get across the road and how we're going to clean up the front side and the backside where it discharges. Uh, so that's, that's been an ongoing one for a few years. And then one of the other ones would be Conca Street from Market Street. The, the street is prone to flooding there because it's all undersized piping. It's all old clay, segmented clay. Those, that runs through, so all that dumps out behind the Calvary Chapel and out to John Dunn Drive. We've already had a camera. We've done multiple vacuuming and jetting in the area. And now we're looking for engineering to do some easements there. Uh, we're going to run that project underneath the sidewalk. So we can, so as opposed to doing the roadwork, we'll actually be replacing the sidewalk. So that will, between that and what the developer's doing up at the other end, we, you know, that'll be a project coming on for a town, for like a town article. And we'll go from John Dunn Drive up to three sixty-five Conca Street. So that takes off, you know, roughly half the road at that point. So. And then just drainage upgrades, you know, through town and mostly during our road projects. But if anything gets blown out, obviously we follow up with that. And our department is in charge of the MS four, four permit and all that. We're in year seven of that permit. So. Um, that's essentially it.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Dave?
You know, all that, you don't even mention the job that you guys do, uh, plowing the streets during the winter.
Uh, yeah, I think, we're pretty, I think we're pretty proud of that.
Of course, that's why I bring it up.
We are going over to a liquid treatment too this year. So I know we touched base on that.
Oh, really?
So this will be the first year we're going to use it at the town buildings and on some of the sidewalks. So we're excited about that. We did do a retrofit at our facility where we do a clean out area where I can actually, it's kind of fun because I can use my degree in it. Where, where we actually have a brine maker. And then what we do is where we do a washout area. That air, water is going to be recycled into a tank, pumped over to our brine maker. We will do a, you know, salinity test. And then we have a storage tank for the, the liquid brine and that will be applied in our truck. So, you know, we don't, we're going to recycle the water and see how it goes. Well, I think we're, as far as I know, we're the only facility that does that, does that right now. So it'd be pretty exciting to see how it works.
So yeah, it's, uh, I, I brought that up. I, uh, played disc golf with a DPW worker in Weymouth, uh, you know, I always complained in Rockland making him look bad.
Always.
Because of the work that you guys do. But I, I want to highlight, you know, um, the sewer update you did, the highway update. Um, thank you for all you do for this town. Um, and I know you've done tremendous work volunteering for the town over the years as well. You know, it's, it's easy to lose sight of the fact that, you know, a lot of what you've mentioned, especially in the highway area, is saving the town money. You know, you're always have an eye toward how can we save the town money? Um, and you know, it's, it's just a testament to, to the work that you and your team do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Dave, thank you, please, hon. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Next on the agenda, other new business, not recently anticipated, Doug?
None.
Jesus, Doug, I almost forgot you were here. Haven't heard from you in like an hour and a half.
Right? Kind of nice, huh?
This is crazy. I looked over, who's that guy? Uh, next on the agenda, old business, Fire Station Building Project Update, Doug.
All right. Thanks, Mike. I'll, I'll try to keep this quick. I, I did send an email note to the board with this information, but I just wanted to publicly report out. As, as you asked me at the prior meeting, what, what the preliminary timeline looks like for the Fire Station project. I just thought I'd very quickly run through it. Uh, the first task is going to be to contract with our owner's project manager. Um, we've done the procurement for that. We're waiting for proposals to be submitted. Um, initially I had hoped to have that, um, that, that company contracted by the end of this month. It'll probably be a week or so later, just aligning schedules with our review team. So let's say early, first, first week of November or so, uh, we'll contract with our OPM right around that same time. The architect, uh, should give us their fee proposal for their work and all their sub consultants' work. And we should be able to contract with the architect by that time as well. Uh, a week or so later, all their sub, sub consultants will be on board. Then by, you know, roughly February of twenty-six, we hope to have all the approvals we need for a new zoning board of appeals, special permit, and any planning ward, site plan review that's required. Uh, then getting into probably the, one of the biggest milestones is the architect having a hundred percent complete final design documents. Uh, we're shooting for mid to late April of twenty-six for that. Then the architect will have the bidding and contract documents done in the summer by the end of August. And that's when we hope to release the invitations to bid for construction around the end of August of twenty-six. And then by the end of October of twenty-six, we hope to have the contractor on board. The notice to proceed, which is just the technical term to give the green light to the contractor to start construction, should be in early November of twenty-six. And then construction starts at that time and then substantial completion when the project is, for the most part, done. Uh, we're shooting for January to February of twenty twenty-eight. So again, this is all subject to change, but, um, based on the input from our architect and others, I think this is a, a reasonable schedule. I'm happy to answer any questions on that, if you have any.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none. Okay. Uh, next on the agenda, other old business not recently anticipated?
I have none.
None. Okay. Town administrator's report and correspondence, Doug.
Thanks, Mike. I know it's been a long meeting, but I, I do have a few things that I want to go over. I'll try to go as quickly as I can. The first, um, I wasn't planning on saying, but I, I feel obligated to say, I mean, after listening to the, the treasurer tonight, you know, the highway superintendent, interim highway su, uh, interim sewer superintendent, recreation director, veterans agent. I mean, I'm just so proud of the staff that we have here. We have outstanding staff. And I think anybody from the public, any taxpayer watching tonight's meeting can really see the value they're getting. And I just want to thank all of them and all the department heads. Um, but tonight really, um, I thought was just a fantastic example of that. Next, I wanted to correct and update something that I publicly reported out at your September second board meeting. On September second, I reported out that we had reached an agreement with our Highway and Parks Union to update their collective bargaining agreement. And unfortunately, while we had reached an agreement, um, and signed an MOU with their bargaining team, um, the full union membership did not ratify that agreement. So we are going back to the drawing board. Um, and we'll be meeting with them soon to reopen negotiations. So I just wanted to clarify that. Next, I, I wanted to highlight that I attended a MMA, uh, regional meeting last week on municipal health insurance trends. And, uh, the headline is it's not good news for anybody in the state, public or private sector. They were projecting, you know, roughly on average, potentially up to a fifteen percent premium increases next year. The two, and there were a number of expert speakers at this event that specialize in collecting data statewide. And the, the two big drivers of it, they said generally are pharmaceutical costs, especially the GLP-1 drugs that are very expensive. Uh, and then number two, this was surprising to me, uh, an increasing number of and also more complex hospital stays. So I thought that was interesting. So more complex hospital admissions, a greater number of them and, uh, and, and medication prescriptions. Uh, obviously it goes without saying, this is incredibly difficult for any city or town to manage within the constraints of Proposition Two and a Half. You know, this is one of our largest budgets. Um, so it makes it difficult. As we've talked about before, we are going to be looking at our copays and deductibles and potentially adding a new, um, high deductible, a lower cost plan for those, uh, employees that might be interested in it to help, help us, you know, control our cost, cost increases. Uh, and we'll be reaching out to our insurance advisory committee and following all the steps in state law to try to make any changes like that. So just a heads up, you know, we'll see as the budget, uh, process progresses and we get information from our, uh, insurance company. Next, I wanted to thank Jim Paul, our former electrical inspector. Um, he has just recently resigned from, uh, the town administration mission. So I want to thank him. He's spent many years advocating for historic preservation in town. He was also there designated to the Community Preservation Committee. So the Historical Commission will need to appoint, designate someone else from there, you know, they don't do.
No, Tom Reagan was the, uh, appointee.
All right. Well, I thought Jim said he was on it, but maybe I'm confused. So I'll scratch that one because we have our CPA expert on the board. Um, but at a minimum, the Historical Commission will, will need to fill his seat on the commission. Speaking of the Community Preservation Committee, Steve will probably want to touch on this more, but at their, on October tenth, at one o'clock at the Senior Center, uh, they'll be doing their annual community outreach public meetings. So encourage anyone from the community that's interested in the CPA committee or just CPA projects in general. October tenth, one o'clock at the Senior Center. Next, we're going to be closed on Monday, the thirteenth due to the Columbus Day holiday. Next, we have, uh, I wanted to highlight that the Phelps Elementary School rooftop solar project that I mentioned literally a couple of years ago, that we initiated and got all our internal town approvals. Um, it's been kind of languishing with National Grid due to some engineering discussions that needed to take place. Uh, I'm really pleased to report we have the green light. And to my pleasant surprise, the econom, that this delay, the economics have actually shifted even further in our favor. For a variety of complicated reasons, uh, it's going to be a behind the meter installation, which means we'll be directly consuming the electricity that we, that we generate. And with our power purchase agreement that we plan on executing, we're literally only going to be paying about five cents a kilowatt hour for this electricity. So we're going to be saving, you know, roughly, uh, in the range of fifty to eighty thousand dollars a year for a long period of time with this arrangement. And it's going to be, uh, a really good installation because it's a flat roof. They actually don't even need to penetrate the roof. The panels will just sit on top of it. So we don't have to worry about roof penetrations. And then lastly, I wanted to talk a bit about what I alluded to at the beginning of the meeting about, um, some acts of heroism from our fire department. So if you'll just give me a couple of minutes, uh, I want to notify the community. I know I'd sent this to you previously. That our fire chief, Scott Duffy, received confirmation from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security that the following people will be honored for outstanding acts of heroism and bravery at the Thirty-Sixth Annual Firefighter of the Year Award Ceremony. And those individuals are Captain Jason Fricker, firefighters Thomas Henderson, Liam O'Flaherty, Robert Creighton, Kyle Costa, Mark Ashri, and Reed Broderick. And if you'll give me just another minute or two, Mike, I'd actually like to read.
I, I was hoping you would.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to read from the actual submission that Fire Chief Duffy, um, sent to the State's Department of Fire Services. At approximately three thirty-seven AM on Friday, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, the Rockland Fire Department responded to a report of a possible fire alarm activation at a single-family residential structure. The call came from a third-party source who stated that her parents' home alarm was sounding, though she was uncertain if there was an active fire. Rockland Engine One was dispatched to investigate. Upon arrival, the crew saw no visible signs of smoke or fire from the exterior. However, as they approached the house, heavy smoke was observed in the rear. Captain Fricker immediately called for additional resources and struck a working fire assignment. While conducting a three hundred and sixty-degree assessment of the property, firefighter Henderson informed Captain Fricker that an elderly male was still inside. Without hesitation, firefighter Henderson entered the smoke-filled home, locating the elderly male and safely carrying him and his walker outside. The male occupant notified crews that his wife was still inside the house. Captain Fricker and firefighter Costa entered the house through the delta side entrance to initiate fire suppression and search efforts. As Captain Fricker attempted a solo search of a front room, he quickly became disoriented due to zero visibility conditioned, conditions caused by the thick smoke. He returned to the ho, he returned to the hose line to assist firefighter Costa in controlling the fire while continuing the primary search. As more units arrived, they established a water supply and provided additional support. Chief Duffy, upon arrival, determined from bystanders that the most likely location of the missing occupant was the front living room on the first floor. He directed Captain Fricker and his crew to focus their efforts there. Re-entering the house through the alpha side door, Captain Fricker and firefighters O'Flaherty and Creighton encountered floor-to-ceiling black smoke and intense fire entering the room from the rear of the house. Despite the extreme conditions and lack of a hose line for protection, the team conducted a rapid search. They quickly located the elderly female occupant and carried her to safety on the front lawn. As they exited the house, the hose line was in place for protection. Life-saving measures were immediately performed on the victim by firefighters Ashri and Broderick. The victim was then transported to the hospital by the Pembroke Fire Ambulance. Tragically, despite the firefighters' valiant efforts, the elderly female did not survive her injuries. The elderly male was also transported to the hospital for evaluation. No other civilians or firefighters were injured during the incident. While all the firefighters listed in this rescue incident deserve meritorious recognition, Captain Fricker, firefighters Henderson, O'Flaherty, and Creighton deserve a higher level of recognition for their selfless actions under extreme fire conditions. I'm not going to say anything after that, other than just thanking them for everything they do for our community.
You know, Doug, I'm, I'm glad that you, you read that because it's just when I read it, I, I sat back and, and I, I was really, you know, proud of the community for investing in the department, in, in building the new fire station, you know, authorizing the, the build. I was proud of them supporting the ladder truck. And then, you know, I thought about, we, we often do the firefighter appreciation day. And, and I hope that when we go up there, you know, the, the words don't, you know, fall hollow on them. You know, when we say, when everybody else is rushing out, they're rushing in. And this is a perfect example of that. You know, we have bona fide heroes in this town, professional heroes, uh, in this town that it's, it's awesome that they are being recognized in this manner. And I, I've known Tom Henderson for a hundred years and he's going to hold this over my head that he's now officially a hero. But, but I couldn't be prouder of Tom. I couldn't be prouder of the rest of that, that unit and, and our department. It's, it's another, you know, you spoke about how proud you are about, you know, the other departments in town. That's, add that to the list. They're, they're a great resource for this town.
A hundred percent. And, you know, I, I talked to the chief about this and, you know, the, the chief will never take credit for anything. But obviously this doesn't happen by accident. There was a ton of training. There is a ton of training that's been reinforced for many years. And, and the training that starts with the chief's leadership on down is what leads to, you know, outcomes like this. The other thing, just because you brought up the fire station project, as we've talked about, one of the major parts of that is a safer working environment.
Of course.
Cleaner areas where they can decontaminate gear and things like that. So the, the chief explained that the intensity of the black smoke and the extreme lack of visibility was, is unusual. And he said, it, it's likely due to, you know, if you go into many of the offices where you have, you know, furniture like this, uh, especially in my office where some of these chairs are plastic, these are all petroleum-based products. That it's not like-
It's fuel to the fire.
Right, right. And so it was, these were extremely dangerous, um, circumstances. And, and again, because you brought up the fire station, we're going to be providing them a safer environment to clean these carcinogens off their gear and, and help protect their lives.
Yeah, that, that was, that was an incredible read. You could visualize everything. And even to the part where Captain Fricker went in and became disoriented and got back to the hose line, it's just like, wow. And then they went back in again, you know, so that's-
Right.
That's really unbelievable. So well deserved.
Yep, thank you. That's all I had.
Thanks for reading that.
Uh, next on the agenda, select board comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the select board and of the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Select board member O'Donnell.
First, just on the CPA, um, event on the tenth, um, I think this is the first time they're doing it during the day. Uh, so folks, please go check it out. I think, uh, the maximum amount of attendees that they've ever had was last year at three people. So go learn about the community preservation act committee. Um, if you're interested in it, it's a great time to ask questions to see if you'd be a good fit to volunteer. So yesterday I attended a half-day summit at my job, um, and the theme was thriving together. The impact of relationships on organizational readiness, I'm sorry, organizational excellence. While this event was geared toward life in a large organization, the messages from the guest speakers were applicable to life in a democratic republic. The first guest speaker, Carla Harris, spoke about leadership in a complex environment. One statement really struck me. Fear has no place in our success equation. I'm letting this be my mantra for this week and hopefully for the foreseeable future. We must not fear what we know to be right. When I ran for this office, I was given the advice, be confident in every statement and action. This mindset has carried me since my announcement that I would be running for select board. In practice, I've seen that it's effective. I even use this left lesson while coaching youth football. Many times, the thing that stops a child from reaching their full potential is a lack of confidence in their own abilities. The other barrier to their success is fear. As I reflect on what is happening across America and as I have conversations with others, it is clear that people are afraid to speak up. However, the messaging to me from these people is clear. Keep doing what you're doing. So here I sit with the hope that my words will bring courage to others, to share their hopes and concerns for our country. When you watch or read the news, horrifying stories paint the screen. An entire apartment building in Chicago was raided. Men, women, and children ripped from their home in violation of the Fourth Amendment. Flag burning, protected by our First Amendment as a type of free speech and frequently upheld by our Supreme Court, was outlawed by an executive order which conflicts with our constitution. The Trump administration is ignoring a restraining order against using the military's law enforcement in Portland, Oregon, which is a violation of the Posse Comitatus Act. All of these things happened in just the last week. Citizens in states that voted for democratic representation are being extorted by the president, withholding congressionally approved funding. In Massachusetts alone, in fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six, harkening back to Doug's comments about healthcare costs, we're looking at three hundred and ninety-nine point three million dollars of lost federal funding, primarily impacting healthcare. It is a promising sign the judiciary has not lost complete sight of the constitution as the state has been successful in appealing two hundred and twenty-three point three million of these funds, being awarded temporary injunctions. On a local level, a handover select board member was harassed for expressing her First Amendment rights. She has shown true leadership by not resigning when the temperature rose. I myself have received bail threats for sharing non-political facts associated with the murder of Charlie Kirk, a murder that was utterly reprehensible, regardless of his political opinions. Think globally, act locally. It's widely attributed to the environmentalist David Brower and was adopted as a slogan by Friends of the Earth, which he founded in nineteen sixty-nine. I have hearkened back to this quote whenever I am asked why I'm so involved in my community. We can make the greatest impacts in our own village. These impacts create ripples, inspiring others. This is also true when we look at national politics. While we are concerned about the state of the nation, we must first champion and enact change at the local level. Volunteer to help local nonprofit organizations. Volunteer to fill vacant board and committee seats. Volunteer to lead a program. Many of these people in this town will remember Ms. Rice, now Mrs. Patton. She served as a teacher, a dean, and a principal. She's the reason multiple generations of Rockland students have an appreciation for the works of William Shakespeare. She posted a similar call to action this week, writing, "It is amazing to me that I am a senior citizen, a remnant of that baby boomer generation. I remember taking the bus from Whitman into Boston to protest against the escalation of the Vietnam War. And then from Whitman to Ashmont Station to stand up for Earth Day and women's rights. And then to realize I had a voice. It was so powerful to me to know that I had power, that I could be heard. Please, all those that follow, rage against those that would silence you. Don't let it just be those senior citizens that remember what it was like before we were heard. We made a difference." I ran for this office with the slogan, "Your Voice for Rockland." How can I be your voice if I'm not speaking up for what is morally right? How can I be your voice if I'm not living the words of the Pledge of Allegiance we recite before every select board meeting? How can I be your voice if I'm not defending our town charter, our state constitution, and our U.S. Constitution? There's a lot of misinformation out there. Some will blindly believe it. Some will see it for what it is. But the truth is, most people are ignoring what's going on because the reality of this situation is scary. In the face of fear, we must be brave. This Sunday morning, as our youth football players prepare to take the field, you will hear our national anthem played three times, once before each game. Take a moment as you hear it echo off the buildings around town to remember, this is the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Thank you, Steve. Select board member Edward.
Uh, once again, I'd like to say how much I enjoy going after Steve.
I'll make that switch next week.
Um, that's all right.
I do apologize.
No, it's, it's fine. Um, the only thing I'm going to say is, uh, thank you to all the department heads who came out tonight to give their updates. The one request that I had, and I know I made this before, is maybe we stagger them out, uh, to give them maybe more of a spotlight, um, on them, maybe have one per meeting or two per meeting rather than a parade of them. So we don't, so not here at nine thirty. So that would be my one request going forward. So.
Do we noted? Okay. Thank you, John. Uh, select board member Edom.
Um, I'd like to echo just, uh, uh, my gratitude to our, our department heads who reported in tonight. Um, we are so fortunate. Um, and I'd also like to thank select board member O'Donnell for the time that you put into your, um, into your comments. Um, I, I, I think, I find them very moving and I, I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany, vice chair Charles.
Um, yeah. Wow. How can we follow that? Um, there's two things happening on October eighteenth. Um, there's the William Mullin Park, uh, dedication, which I encourage everybody to attend. Um, it's pretty fabulous, uh, that we're honoring him. He, uh, passed in the Strand Theater fire, right? And I, and I keep thinking, wow, Rockland actually had a movie theater. That's amazing. You know, it'd be nice to have one again eventually. Um, but, and, and to honor, you know, the bravery that he had and, and giving the ultimate sacrifice. And that certainly could have happened with our current firefighters who are being honored as well. And I was wondering, when is the firefighter of the year ceremony? You know, when and where that is?
It's in November in Worcester.
I, yeah, I remember it's in Worcester.
November twenty-something.
It's Tuesday, November twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, okay.
Yep.
Terrific. Um, and the second thing that's happening, um, is in Plymouth and Boston and a few other, you know, towns around the South Shore is the No Kings Protest. Um, for those of you attending that, to exercise your First Amendment right to assemble and protest, um, stay hydrated, bring snacks, and be kind to one another.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Edward. Uh, so, you know, echo, you know, I've done a lot of talking tonight, but to echo, you know, Doug's sentiments, you know, we are blessed to have some, some great department heads in this town, some, some great employees that, that share the vision for, for the town to just continue to move the town forward and, and be innovative and take ownership of their departments. And, and you can see it in the fashion with which they, uh, present their department. Uh, with that being said, I also want to compliment Gene Whiny for another terrific fall festival, uh, very well attended. Uh, I don't know what the final number was. I think it was around four or five thousand people attended, which was, uh, pretty remarkable. So with that, we do have an executive session coming and Mr. O'Donnell has another piece of information to read for us.
Sure. Um, I move the select board vote to enter your executive session to discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating process of the town of Rockland. And the chair so declares pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three to Whit Falco versus Rockland, Public Records case, not to return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session.
So per Mass General Law, section, uh, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three, Chris Falco versus Town of Rockland, Public Records requests complaint. Uh, the chair determines that it would be detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town of Rockland. Uh, so this should be held in executive session. And per Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A seven, for the review and approval of executive session minutes nine sixteen, two thousand twenty-five, not to reconvene. Uh, we'll take a roll call vote. Select board member Edom?
Yes.
Select board member Edward?
Yes.
Select board member O'Donnell?
Yes.
Select board vice chair Charles?
Yes.
And myself. That's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Good night.